Good evening and welcome to the San Francisco City Council and Planning Commission's special meeting of March the eighteenth, twenty twenty five. The meeting has been called to order. Roll call, please. First, we will do the City Council, then the Planning Commission. City Clerk.
Councilmember Alvarez. Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here.
Commissioner Viazade is on an excused absence. Commissioner Duralson. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Levine.
Here.
Commissioner Maddick is on an excused absence. Vice Chair Kun.
Here.
Chair Harmon.
Here.
Thank you. First, to the Planning Commission, I want to thank you again. I know that I continually say let's have joint meetings, but I think it worked well. We initiated it, and I think it's good to hear from each other directly. I think it also is efficiency for staff, so we don't need to have two separate meetings, then to come back and discuss the same thing. So, but I do appreciate it because I know it's putting, you do a lot as well, meaning twice a month as we, and we had a part review, so thank you. With that, City Clerk, we're going to move on to the Item Three Study Session.
Study Session for the Tantran redevelopment project.
Thank you. At this time, before we go in with staff's presentation, because I live within a proximity of Tantran, I will be recusing myself for that from my residence of where I live. Because we're dealing with the project as a whole, I have to recuse myself. As an example, when we did the Hyundai temporary Sears, I was able to vote on that because of the proximity. So in this case, I will have to, I am choosing to by, to recuse myself from that. I will now be turning the meeting over to the Vice Mayor, the other Medina, and so I will now turn it over to you. Don't forget to come and get me at some point in the process. Don't get gone.
All right, I promise, I promise I will immediately call for your return. Well. Good evening, good evening, everyone. Welcome. Meeting for us today. Steph, we have the presentation on this matter.
Yes. Vice Mayor Medina, members of the Council and members of the Planning Commission. I don't know. Can you get the title slide out? So we are here to talk about the Tantran redevelopment project. It has had a it has had a long history. Upon learning that the properties at the Tantran Mall were up for sale, the City Council adopted their reimagining Tantran land use fact sheet in twenty twenty one, which described what the vision of, what the city's vision for the site was with a diverse mix of uses in at least one thousand housing units. In early twenty twenty two, Alexandria or ARE completed the purchase of all of the last property to take ownership of the entire site. Later that year, ARE submitted a conceptual plan which was presented to Council as a presentation. Around that same time, the city opened the Engagement Center at the Hall. And since that, and since that opening, the Engagement Center has hosted a total of sixteen events with three hundred and nine attendees. It collected nine hundred, more than nine hundred surveys, which demonstrates a significant engagement effort by the city to inform and get feedback interested members of the community about the project. In early twenty twenty three, the City Council adopted the first version of the current housing elements, which did identify the Tantran site having one thousand one thousand units in our site inventory. And also in twenty twenty three, Council received two updates on the project's status and the engagement efforts. In all of twenty twenty four, ARE submitted a formal development application to reason on the property and to entitle the redevelopment of the project. The EIR, Environmental Impact Report has been underway, and in November, Joint Council and Commission Study Session was held to go with this project. So the Tantran project has been, has been for many years, a significant amount of huge engagement and regular updates of the Council. I will cover the remaining milestones of the schedule before handing off to ARE to cover the specifics of the project. So moving forward, the draft of our environmental impact report will have its public review period in mid-June to the end of July. Because the lands in question are within the purview of the Airport Land Use Commission, there will be hearings from the ALUC and CCAG on consistency of the project with the airport land use plan. And, and Council recalls with the housing element, identifying housing for this site requiring an override of the ALUC because of noise issues. So the expectation is that the ALUC will again say that the project is inconsistent, and the Council will have to adopt an intent to override in September of twenty twenty five. In early October twenty twenty five, finding its, the final EIR flow distributed. And in late October, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the entitlement package, which would include the new planned development zoning, a subdivision map, development agreement, minor text amendment to the general plan, the environmental impact report, and any planned development permits for portions of the project that have their design review details ready at that time. The Planning Commission's recommendation will be brought to the City Council at a meeting in mid, in mid-November, where if the, if Council approves that package, then the last item would be the actual adoption of the ordinances introduced in mid-November would occur at, at the last meeting in November twenty twenty five. So that's kind of the history of the project, a quick overview of engagement as well as the remaining schedule. Now we will shift to the project itself, and ARE will provide that presentation.
We'll keep Peter, uh, so we are Medina, members of the Council, I am Commission. Thanks for the opportunity to present again today. We're here in November. We're excited to provide an update of where the project's at. And look forward to your feedback, as well as the public comment. So with that, I'm also going to have, we're joined by, with Katie Hofstadter from Strata, as well as Monan Shaw and Ian Murphy from Gentler and BDE to talk, be here as resources for the technical discussion. So, and I think Peter did a great job laying out sort of the history of this project, you know, Alexandria, as, as we saw on the timeline, finisher acquisition in the beginning of twenty twenty two, and I think the city did a great job early on really envisioning what Tantran could be. And I just, we thought it was important to sort of reiterate sort of our, what we've heard the city's rules are and how we're sort of envisioning that for the site. The first and foremost is really the revitalization of, of a Strata Mall and turning it into a new economic driver for the city and the region. To add a thousand units as a part of the housing element, to create jobs and economic development, including an innovation center, given the life science, commercial or tech use, to replenish the tax base by creating new economic drivers to use sustainability very smartly and green the site, to honor local and cultural heritage, and to create a really new environment gathering place for the community, shops, plazas and restaurants, and to really take advantage of the trans according nature of the site and create better pedestrian connections. You all know the site very well. For Alexandria, we have a large portfolio of assets, life science projects, Excel system. This is a really attractive site for us, just not just because of the scale and size. It's very rare that you come across forty-five acres and the peninsula, but also because of the transit orientation site, direct access to BART and Caltrans, as well as key vehicular access points. I'm not going to spend much time on this, other than because Peter went through it in detail. We've been working really close with the city staff. It's been a great working relationship, and our focus between now and November is really on the environmental impact review, our entitlement work, all the different deliverables that will be in front of you, remember, that Peter mentioned, and ongoing community outreach. We wanted to just take a step back, you know, what we, and look at what we, what we presented in November of twenty twenty four, what we heard from the Council, from Planning Commission, and from the community. The first was, you know, at that point in time, we had, we had this sort of big box retail in the corner, and we heard very clearly that some concerns around that massing move at SNE that El Comino Real. We heard very clearly the importance of activating SNE to ensure a great site circulation, to have good open space for the public and good pedestrian connection, to be thoughtful about the parking strategies, and to, you know, and to consider additional housing units above the thousand committed to as part of the housing element. If you look at the left, so here's where we were in November, as you can see, the big box retail on the corner. On the right is our current site plan, which was resubmitted in January this year. The big, you know, the big move is that working with Target, we decided, they decided we work very closely with them to stay in their current location. So that, that was the big move, Target staying in the current location, as you can see, we're gonna well, here, yeah, you can see right in the middle of the site. And then two large flex zones. So the, the outcome of the move, most of the site is really the same. We have the same distribution of residential units in purple. The main, so the first of those that Katie will talk about is the sort of the center residential, so that's the main market rate housing. Next to it is the affordable housing project, and then the third one at the top right is the last of the residential. You have Target and the cinema in yellow staying in place. A reconfigured retail village, which was something we were really excited about, anchors the site, and the, and the first phase of life science or tech office in the bottom left. The, the outcome of Target moving, I think, is actually really beneficial for the project, creates better site circulation, and, and I think a really unique opportunity in a larger flex zone up left. And we began to study what that could be, and we'll talk about the two different scenarios. One would just max life science more office, and the other just max mixed use. Under the maximum mixed use scenario, you could see additional housing there, potential hotel, and additional retail. One of the things that we thought was important, just to remind, sort of round ourselves on the site, it's, it's all great development requires, you know, a response to the existing conditions. This is a, a diagram we put together to really lay out what we're working with on the site in terms of the constraints. So with Target staying at the center of the site and the garage to the east of it, that is a fixed point. The cinema is west of it. The BART station is obviously not moving, nor is their parking. We have very set access points in green for the site, as well as the existing police station. And I think importantly, there's a, you know, there's an F eight height limit, and it's one of the largest constraining elements of the site, seventy-nine feet and seven inches, I believe, it's sort of past how high it can go. So it really limits the amount of, of density across the site. And then we obviously have a thousand units, and we place it very strategically on the north part of the site. And all of those are the responses that we're thinking about. How do we go out the site? How do we make sure that it flows? Where do we sign the retail and the other commercial pieces? So on the two scenarios we're studying today, there's a mixed, there's a max R and D, and there's a max mixed D. So this is what we're studying through the EIR process. The big difference in it, if you look at the two side by side, under the max R and D, we basically build out flex zone one and flex zone two with as much life science or tech office as we can, which takes us to about one point eight million square feet. Under that scenario, we still deliver a thousand units of multifamily. We create, you know, almost one hundred thousand feet of retail, and it's really just building out those two zones, which are an important part of the entitlement package, in that we have the collectives as the, at the ability to respond to market forces and build those out with a mix of uses. But under the max scenario, that's all life science. Under the max mixed use, essentially those zones substitute that life science or a portion of the life science with additional multifamily, with some additional retail, we've envisioned potentially a grocer anchored, as well as potential hotel on the site. And so under that scenario, you get to totals for footage across the whole site that's at the very bottom, largely the same, but you add in a hotel, you add in essentially five hundred additional units, and you reduce the total amount of office or life site space. So we, kind of we can jump into some images and renderings of the different uses on the site, starting with retail, because retail is really the anchor to the retail village. Question, okay. And then we'll talk about multifamily, and then we'll finish with the life science component. So one of the things that's really exciting about this site is the opportunity to create a new destination in San Frido, one that enhances and complements the surrounding community. It's not a either worse scenario, but one that is, that is complimentary to downtown and provides a unique amenity for residents who will be on this site, the thousand units or more, the workers in the buildings as well, and so to come to the site via BART, all by car. One of the things that we, as we thought about the site, obviously there's a unique, unique impact, right? We've got noise from SFO, we've got often wind and weather, and so as we thought about how to create a great environment, we looked to other successful retail sort of centers around the country that were open and inviting, that had great spaces for engagement. And so these are some images of sort of look and feel as we think separately around what the site could be in terms of materiality and gathering spaces. The anchors from the big move within the retail village that we're contemplating is this creation of a market, a central market hall, where you have gathering spaces, areas to eat, from different vendors to gather throughout the day. So if you're a resident, you're grabbing your coffee in the morning, you're having lunch there if you're working, or if you're going to the movie, you can stop and have a beer before. But this internal market hall really allows weather protection and an environment to, to gather in the center of the site that's then surrounded by retail at the base of the multifamily and standalone around the cinema, connecting BART back to the heart of the site. So this is, you know, Market Hall, Everdale's a local example of a successful Market Hall, and then again, some additional images of what the interior of that Market Hall could be. Again, stands, smaller operators, soft goods, food and beverage, and places for, for folks just to hang out. Here's another view. One of the things we heard very clearly was a need for a public open space, and so we have this large retail, this large gathering green, if you will, that's adjacent to the Market Hall, and then surrounded by the residential directly across from it. And we envision this to be a zone, this program throughout the year, you know, with events, an opportunity for the community to engage and gather. Here's another view, looking to the southwest. Two different perspectives of, one, the Market Hall looking directly to the east, so on its left is the multifamily project Katie will talk about. Right below that is the beginning of some thoughts about what the retail, what the cinema can look like once the mall comes down. One of the big impacts right now is the mall is demolished. We have to solve the connection point, right? So the main connection point to the cinema today is near that sky bridge. And so we're beginning to think about what would that cinema look like re-envisioned, so you have an access point as well as retail around the ground plan. So if you're looking at this, you're basically looking dead on at the cinema on your right, as far, you know, on your left would be the retail village. Here's another view of that cinema entrance. So we have to obviously solve access. All the parking remains under that cinema. We're basically wrapping the base of it with standalone retail. And, and I think this is a great image because it gives a real sense of sort of the pedestrian look and feel. We're really thinking about the landscape strategy for the site, how to create and calm the roadways and, and offer zones for pedestrians to gather, and a big part of it will be the landscape strategy. Here's another view tonight, looking back to the cinema. And then brother, I'll let you ease your mind regarding that.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Medina, Councilmembers and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Katie Hofstadter. I'm with Strata Investment Group, and it is a pleasure to walk you through the residential portion of the site tonight. As you can see from site plan on the screen, the residential component of this project is largely consistent with what you've seen before. Or as Peter and Christian both mentioned, we've got a thousand units of housing in total in three different residential buildings, and that is consistent with the vision for the site that the city laid out in its reimagining Tantran land use fact sheet, and also with the more recently adopted housing element for San Frido. And one of the reasons that Alexandria partnered with Strata on this project is we've got extensive entitlement experience, but we also have a lot of experience in and developing large-scale residential buildings and a strong track record of entitling projects that actually get instructed. And so our big focus with, you know, the residential in Tantran is, is entitling a project that we think is, is feasible and, and developable. And one of the ways that we're, we're really focused on kind of reducing the timeline between entitlements and start of construction is, is pushing forward the development or the design of the residential one building, most specifically, the residential one building on the screen is the largest of the three multifamily buildings. It's over six hundred units. And by pushing forward the design of that, we can kind of pull back the, the start of construction date. We are really optimistic that all three of the residential buildings that you see on the screen can be part of that first phase of construction on the Tantran project. A six hundred unit building is a, a large building, especially within an eighty foot height limit. The footprint of this building is about three acres in total, and so it's really important to come up with an architecture here that, that remains visually interesting, given the size of this building. We're working with BDE Architects, who's a firm that Strata has worked with on a few different projects in the Bay Area, to kind of lead the design of this building, and you'll see, we've got a couple renderings as part of this presentation, but they're really working to to create interest in the massing through a mix of materials and also kind of changes in playing on the facade, which are achieved through kind of recesses and balconies, and also, you know, some, some pop outs as well. The other thing that we're really focused on is activating the ground floor here on all of the frontages, and most specifically on all of the four corners of the building. We know that's important for the city, and it's also important for us to feel like this building really ties into the rest of the site plan, but also the neighborhood and the community as a whole. And so all four of the corner, the ground floor corners are activated with either ground floor residential amenities or ground floor retail to really tie it into the rest of the site. Show you one other view here. And just the last thing on this residential one building I wanted to speak to is for similar sized projects in similar locations, we generally target a unit mix of about sixty to seventy percent studios and one-bedroom units, and then about thirty to forty percent two to three bedroom units, and that's consistent with what we're targeting. So I think that came up the last time we talked, so wanted to touch on that. I also wanted to touch on the affordable housing component of this project, because I know we talked about that last time we met in November a little bit. As Christian mentioned, the residential two building that's part of the site plan is about a two hundred unit standalone affordable housing building. We talked a little bit about the advantages of that the last time we met. One of the main advantages is that it allows us to have overall more affordable housing than we would in an inclusionary structure. With the two hundred unit standalone project, we're at about twenty percent overall affordability, whereas in an inclusionary structure, we'd be closer to fifteen percent, which is the city's, the city code minimum. Also, the standalone structure allows us to bring on a really experienced or affordable housing partner to help design and develop this building, and I think that's a really important component of, of the benefits too. We're in talks right now with two really well-respected and highly regarded affordable housing developers, and are planning to bring out a partner within the next quarter to really inform the affordable housing plan that will be a part of our entitlements package, that affordable housing partner will be involved in determining kind of the overall design of the building, but also the population that we're targeting, and the financing structure for both the construction and the operation of the affordable housing building. One thing I will say is something that this entire development team is really focused on is making sure that this affordable housing building feels like it is cohesive and complimentary with the rest of the site. And, you know, when the project is fully developed and a visitor comes to the site, they can't pinpoint which is the affordable housing building and which are the market rate buildings. And Strata actually recently completed a project in San Francisco that has three market rate buildings and one fully supportive housing building, and I think really successfully achieved that there, whereas if any of you went to the site today, I don't think you can pinpoint like, oh, that's the affordable building. I think it's, it all ties together very well.
So last, we've got, you know, really just the first phase of the life size, so the first kind of commercial component, which will be a part of the package, the permits that are submitted this fall. It represents about six hundred fifty thousand square feet and over three buildings with landscape center core and starts with the park. One of the things that we always do is we think about projects on the commercial side, as we, and, and for Alexandria, really cultivating, create life science ecosystems. So think of them as sort of living, breathing campuses, and the buildings play obviously an important role for the science, but also important, well, sort of how they're grounded in the context of the, of the site in which they're at. And so for this project, you know, we really thought about the history of the site, we thought about its connection to nature, its unique speed component, as it relates to horps racing and aviation, and then also leaning into the geology, and those kind of three moves thematically show up in a conceptual approach to each of the three different lab buildings in terms of their look and feel and facade. Just a quick layout of the site. Essentially, this is the, you know, El Camino is to the left there, to the west, Tantran, to the north. You have three lab buildings with ultimately a structured parking garage and an amenity to go in for the lab, the lab things themselves. We are really intentional about the programming of those amenity spaces. You know, the big focus is ensuring that the life science tenants can maximize the use of the site space to, you know, to create care for cancer, to advance innovation, and so we actually provide quite a bit of amenity that you wouldn't find in your space, so conferencing, fitness and, and other sort of uses, and that allows tenants to have more of their space on science. This is the first collection. This is your app. You're basically standing in the road of El Comino Real, looking down Tantran Way. You know, and these are all four to five story buildings that wrap that center of the site. A couple of buildings have drop-off areas. Again, most of the parking is in the structured parking, but direct sort of visual connection, lots of transparency, about as much as you can get current energy code, and, you know, really efficient plates, simple, let's say. The second, the second of the three is, is that one's sort of focused on the aviation space, you sort of see that representative facade. One of the moves we often prioritize is create outdoor gathering spaces. You know, life science tenants, different than other tenants, actually prioritize the ability to access usable outdoors spaces. Here, we have a number of tenant decks that create a direct connection in nature. And again, these buildings have to invite great, quite a bit of great change. If you look for El Camino, the height ten, the site slopes twenty-five, twenty-seven feet. And so as you go down Tantran Way, you're more kind of dealing with that as we create a building that responds to the pedestrian environment and creates great connection points. So here, you're looking kind of that center part of the campus, and it's important for us, the retail village is a really a really strong move and an important component of activation of the site. We wanted to make sure that the buildings had that transparency back and forth between that retail village. Here's another view of the inside of that site, so landscape zone and looking into the building, so you'd be looking to the north here. And the final building, very, very different architectural style, again, tenant decks. This is the one that's meant to look more geologic, and it's sort of massing. We have to be super thoughtful about the plates themselves, because we need to, you know, make sure that the science functions well, so there's sort of give and take about how much we can do with how the building, what it looks like, but we try to be thoughtful with the facade here that is warm and inviting and, and other view, if you're looking into, into the, from the center into the project. And that's the presentation. So look forward to questions. I hope to comment and appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this site? Do you have a few cards?
Yes, with the following numbers, the public, please press the podium. Melissa Burks, followed by Heather Lada, followed by Annie Yoshiyama, followed by Amado Valdade.
City Clerk. How many cards do you have?
I will have to grab people that are in the thing, but I name the
Wanted to see if three minutes was going to be sufficient. Wanted to see if three minutes was going to be sufficient.
Here the total is six.
Great. All right.
Good evening. Vice Mayor Medina, City Council members and Planning Commission of San Bruno. My name is Melissa Burrows and I'm a lifelong resident. Not to date myself, but forty six years I've lived in and loved our city with a heart. I became a Carter and fourth grader at Allen and also went through our public school system, attended Rollingwood Parkside and Cappuccino. As a union member and executive at a union hall, I work closely with the San Mateo County Labor Council and the Building Trades and am thoroughly vested in PLAs and developmental agreements across our county. As the president of the PTA, I am also dedicated to hands-on community work that fosters partnerships to support student success and overall school improvement. The city council plays a major role in ensuring that development and redevelopment projects benefit local schools and communities. So I'm here tonight to ask the city council, along with the city management, to take into account the needs of San Bruno Public Schools as it negotiates the community benefits package for the project. A well-designed community benefits package ensures that a development not only benefits the city economically, but also strengthens the community. And you cannot strengthen the community when education is ignored. Two weeks ago in Daly City, the developer, Ari Vont Energy Inc., who are in charge of the Cormier Development Energy Storage Project, agreed to include a solar project at Big Shore Elementary School. Agreements between developers and cities can and do earmark funds and benefits for school. The Daly City project is pennies on the dollar compared to the upcoming Tan Fran project. Bell Air Elementary and Parkside Intermediate are both schools that are zoned in the district of the Tan Fran project. Coincidentally, both of these schools are also high needs. There are many ways that improvements could be made at these sites that would benefit not only these schools, but San Bruno residents and our city as a whole. For example, the redevelopment of the Bear Oil, Bear Oil Air Fields and Community Center along with the Lyons Clark Baseball Lyons. Wait, getting all the stuff just here. Along with the baseball field at Lyons Mark. Improvements to the front of the Parkside campus where there's congestion, which causes safety issues in that area as well. Another option is to be open. The city and the school district have intersecting needs and shared priorities. A portion of the community benefits package could go to the school, district, or SBF directly, both of which support improved education. Thank you for your time, consideration, and help in sharing this development and others. Through this development and others, San Bruno schools are well funded and the community is driven. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Medina, City Council members, Planning Commission members and city management. My name is Heather Lada. I am a San Bruno resident, mother of two students at Allen Elementary and president of the San Bruno Education Foundation. Tonight, I first wanted to thank the city council members and planning commission members who reached out to the San Bruno Education Foundation following the November meeting where a number of local parents talked on this same topic. We really appreciate your interest in talking to us about how we can move forward. And I particularly also wanted to thank city manager Matthew Tyre for meeting with myself and the superintendent about the same topic. But at this point, the path board is still not here. And so I'm here tonight to reiterate our request that the city council and the city management find a way to consider the needs of San Bruno's public schools during negotiations with the community benefits package for this Tan Fran redevelopment project. And I believe that the city should really consider when every community benefits package is considered for any major development in San Bruno. Our public schools play a vital role in our community and in developing our future generations. However, our public schools need many improvements, which once improved and completed will improve their reputation and increase our property values, which are now hurt by the fact that competing school districts throughout the peninsula have a better reputation than ours. Development projects such as these present an opportunity to help the city and the schools move forward together. Unfortunately, in the past, the city of San Bruno has not looked at community benefits packages in this way. For example, the city used tens of millions of dollars in community benefits from the YouTube expansion project to pay down debts instead of for something that really feels like a community benefit. I ask that you have a vision for these community benefits so that they can really benefit our community. I, like Melissa, wanted to point out that the Tan Fran project is districted for Bell Air Elementary and Parkside Intermediate, both of which are schools with high needs. There are many ways that improvements at these school sites can benefit both the city and the schools, like the examples that Melissa pointed out for redeveloping the Bell Air Fields in combination with Lyons Park or safety improvements at Parkside. But, you know, I I think that there are many other projects that potentially could be put up forward with the superintendent, the school board, and the city council and city manager put their heads together. We are one city. The school, students, and parents are an important part of the community. And I think there are a lot of overlapping needs that could be found. I, so I encourage you to look at that. And then as Melissa said, if you cannot find any intersecting projects, to please still provide a portion of the community benefits to the school district or the education foundation directly so we can support the improved education of our students. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker, Annie Yoshiyama, followed by Armando Valbuena.
Thank you. My name is Annie Yoshiyama. Thank you to council, along with the planning commission, city management. My name, I'm a parent of two children at John Mayer Elementary School. I've lived in San Bruno since 2013. So, you know, ARE has a wide footprint across the peninsula's life science industry. I myself work in biotech and previously I worked in an ARE owned property. So I'm quite familiar with ARE's business model. I recognize the incredible impact this development can have for San Bruno. As a parent, I'm asking that the city council, committee and the and the city management work with ARE to consider how its development can benefit the broader community outside of the life sciences industry. The Tan Fran project contains slightly over one thousand housing units. People who are choosing where to live often factor schools into their decision making. These units will impact our school enrollment and I'm advocating that the schools be considered for the community benefits package. The schools in San Bruno are refunding to keep up with the needs of the community. And we, parents, are asking that ARE can demonstrate its commitment to the schools who are a major part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, San Bruno team, developer team, residents. My name is Armando Valbuena. I have always been a resident of San Bruno, except for a stint in college. I grew up playing ball in those fields, went to El Cristal, went to Allen, went to Parkside, and had all sorts of fun here. After my big move twelve miles away, I decided to come back home and buy a house here. I raised my family, two girls in second and in fourth grade, or no kindergarten and fourth grade. The image of me coming back was all of the memories I had here in this like five hundred meters of San Bruno. And that I wanted to give that feeling and give that education to my children. I'm here today to ask all of you to take into account the needs of San Bruno's public schools as it negotiates the community benefits package for the Tan Fran redevelopment project. As you know, our schools require many improvements. In, you know, we had a great discussion with the city manager and I really appreciated his thoughtfulness. He's obviously very skilled and knowledgeable about all of our obligations and about all of the city's needs. But he made it crystal clear that the decision for appropriating any funds lies with the body that sits right before you. While the city councils don't always directly control school or budgets, they do influence funding through tax allocation, infrastructure investments, which is why the schools need our city council today. I want to point out last that voters, you know, who see their schools in need often connect the dots to city leadership, either right or wrong, and vote accordingly. We'd love to continue the conversation and discuss any projects or areas of need within the schools and where they can be funded. We're available anytime. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker, Linda Mason, followed by Matt Jones, followed by Bart Ponteau.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to thank Strata and Alexandria for this exciting project that really cannot come soon enough. And the city manager and staff are moving this project forward. On September twenty eighth, two thousand twenty one, the city council approved the Bay Hills specific plan that included a fifty four million dollar community benefits package. Community benefit is defined as generally meaning of the facilities, improvements, and or services that benefit and serve the city as a whole. Not just the property or Bay Hills specific plan area. Community benefit contributions must be over and above those required by existing city requirements or policies as part of typical project approvals and or to mitigate project impacts. The city of San Bruno received a hundred percent of these funds, which was never publicized or posted outside of a potential mention in the annual budget presentation. Approximately half of those funds are development fees and were allocated as required by the city. The other half is questionable. On February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, as part of the budget presentation, the council voted to correct the budget and audit adjustments to transfer twenty three point sixty seven million dollars from the community benefit fund to CityNet and Stormwater funds to zero out the negative equity position. With the twenty three point sixty seven million dollar budget adjustment, the city received eight million dollars for sale of Comcast. And where that money is going is still unknown. Council, you are urged to stop using remaining YouTube, Google funds to provide band aid fixes and establish, along with a community foundation, a long-term legacy project like the one we are all sitting in now. Let's fast forward to today, where we don't have to, where we don't want to see such community benefits used as they are and have been used thus far. This is also one of the first times in recent San Bruno history where enrollment in our public schools has stabilized and that we are not losing students. In fact, Parkside has seen a nominal increase and two of our schools are already at capacity. Understanding the many city needs, the handling of the YouTube funds through today, I also want to remind the council of our twenty four year garbage contract that included a provision to host an annual public school fundraiser. While no evidence would show that this was ever done in twenty four years, the council, minus Ms. Alvarez, who was not on the council at the time, extended the contract another ten years, totaling thirty four years. The only difference in the amendment was that nothing was to be mentioned or given to our schools in that amendment. Thirty four years with no competition and nothing given to our schools. You are urged to carve out a space in these benefits for our schools that are on the rise. Your support is needed and it matters. Please consider contributing a portion of these funds to the schools. Your vote matters to our kids. We are all watching and we are all talking. And your money is where your values are. And we ask that you give some of this money to our public schools because these funds will not continue to happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Jones.
Hi, everyone. My name is Matt Jones. I'm a longtime resident of San Bruno, former San Bruno city planner and VPAC member. I think this project's a big step forward for the city. I support it overall. In terms of housing, I'm so grateful that council decided to override the report menus commissioned at housing. I spoke at that hearing and I am just so grateful that this is finally moving forward. With the housing just as affordable as we can get it, as much as we can get on site, I think would be great because while I do support a mix of uses, I think having transit oriented development with with affordable housing right here, transit is a good move for any community, but especially San Bruno that has a long history of being one of the more affordable places to live in the Bay Area. I love the food hall idea and I want to ensure that the food quality exceeds that of a biotech cafeteria so we can bring in some of those biotech workers and get some extra sales tax revenue. I, I, one, one question I had around this was how we've thought about how it connects with surrounding land use. It is transit oriented development. We have a Bart station. We have a Caltrain station that's pretty close and it's a bus hub right now for Sam Trans. So I, I'm just a challenge to the city and to the owners. How can we get a really strong transportation demand management plan that would really help us get people out of their cars and make it more friendly? Because right now, you know, trying to cross from all the housing that was added at the former Navy site to get over to Bart, it's like you're just crossing a sea of parking and no one enjoys that. And it's, it's not friendly to seniors who might otherwise not have access to Bart. Speaking of which, the surrounding streets includes El Camino Real and another hat I wear is a work for the Bike Coalition and we have a regional effort to try to add bike lanes out of El Camino Real. So just when we're thinking through this, there's going to be some that should be coming online in South City. I wouldn't want them to just end at San Bruno when we have an opportunity right in front of us to to rethink that corridor. The next challenge I'd provide to to council and to and to planning commission here is how can we be forward thinking and also look back? We have the the legacy of Tan Fran of what it used to be. We have a memorial plaza there that honors, you know, and pays homage to what happened there. And I would like us to continue to either, you know, retain or strengthen, you know, that message because it's an important one of how we can heal from from what happened in the past. I also want to just note there's an art gallery space that's doing well in Tan Fran. I want to make sure that we still have opportunities to build in public art spaces for public gathering and green spaces. So that's my ask of council. How can we honor our history, our identity, and help us think forward as a community? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hey, I was sure I was three called out a little bit here. I heard that in the right order. Very short term memory. Vice Mayor, council members, commissioners, my name is Bart Ponteau and I represent the San Mateo County Building Construction Trades Unions, an AFL-CIO affiliate with two hundred local building trades unions representing approximately ten thousand working men and women who live and or work in San Mateo County, many who reside in San Bruno. Wow. My hands are kind of sweaty. I left in person. It's, it's been the mission of the Building Trades Council to improve the quality of life for construction workers, promote the value of highly skilled craft workers and increase opportunity in the construction industry for all. Alexandria has had a good history of utilizing the highly skilled and trained workforce of the Building Trades affiliate units to build in life science. The council is looking forward to this continued collaboration. This development will be more than life science. The trades welcome engagement with Alexandria regarding the commercial, retail, and multi-residential unit construction. We believe that the record of quality, high production, and effective construction in life science can be expanded to the entirety of the development. The buzz from several news outlets is that there are not enough skilled, trained craft workers to take on the new development coming to us in projects like Tan Fran. This isn't, this is not entirely true. The issue is that there is a deficit of dedicated employment that we can direct our pipeline of apprentice applicants. There are thousands of, there are thousands of applicants across the various trades unions looking to start an apprenticeship. Companies like this and many others in the in the county are the first stepping stone to applying these applicants towards the pathway to a career in construction through apprenticeship. I look forward to developing a constructive plan with Alexandria representatives on the points that I'm dressed and I'm going to have to bring in time. It's also out there. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comment.
I have no other speaker cards.
No other speaker cards. Let's call anybody that didn't turn in a card. It's not that scary. We welcome you. All right. So let's go to questions from the
So uh, let's go to questions from the many questions. Comment.
Who wants to go first?
Not seeing any other hands going up. I have a few uh, comments or questions. Um, first of all, it's it's interesting with the transition to the target staying on its existing footprint. Um, I think to the community perspective, that's going to be valuable and a lot of people patronize it, value it, having not need to shut down the move will be valuable. It doesn't seem like it means we are at least in the short term still supervising the airspace above it. Um, perhaps if uh, when the ability really gets to run down and needing to break. Clarify on one thing, the parking lot that is showing potential part target and plan is still the existing parking lot, so that will not be reconstructed. Is that right?
Yeah, that's the question.
Uh. What other? General comment. Well, yeah, the offices look great. Love the the look of things. I continue to have concerns. Uh, I'd really like to see some kind of range of estimates on the actual job numbers associated with the offices rather than just square footage. Um, I continue to be fairly concerned that the the jobs housing ratio, especially if we end up with the the max office scenario, um, really would be quite dire for our top tags of maintaining a sensible jobs housing ratio in the area in the long run. Like, I don't expect any single project necessarily trying to, you know, be hitting that balance. But, you know, the the amount of office we already have in our pipeline really outweighs the amount of housing we're expecting even if we hit our V and F, which we will be talking about real soon. Um, and so I I just I'm concerned that we are making housing shortage on the peninsula worse. I would like to not do that. Um, so I I really hope we think about um, pushing those black zones um, towards the housing side of the house.
Keep that presentation. Uh, architecture looks great. Uh, you're right, the six hundred unit building is extremely large. I can't any project that I've seen of that size. Um, I was just, if the more you can do to break it up, make it not look like one. Uh, my concerns actually, thank you, but my concerns actually, um, outside of how it's connected, getting a cross out if you don't buy by foot or by bike. We need people driving in. Uh, El Camino is a negative there. It's it's very wide. Um, and I don't know whose responsibility this will be to the project in the city, but other things to um, improve the access signaling and different things like that. Um, so that's that's my largest concern to to this successful project.
I think that to be said, that's a question. I think both is the answer to that. Like, we're working collaboratively with the city um, and our, you know, traffic and circulation consultants to to study those effects.
And and the city highway, I guess, right?
And and yeah, Caltrans, yeah.
To the chair. I think someone's walking over there. One of the things, one of the things they did not hear any comments and I'm certain that it's in there, but any um, uh, any designs for families and children. Uh, you saw, talk, you talked a lot about community, bringing people together, uh, having relationships going on within the community, the marketplace, all those. They didn't quite hear uh, anything about children. And uh, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think uh, for the families and children on the residential component, some of those larger units are the ones that would appeal more to to families and children. I don't think we've gotten as far as, we haven't, you know, fully designed the residential facilities yet to uh, to accommodate families and children. And I think a lot of the, you know, the benefits to families and children, both as residents of the project site and San Bruno as a whole will will happen in that opening city.
That's been most of the focus, at least outside of the residential world. Again, as you talk to those providers, there may be a family housing part of that, maybe that's down the road to be determined. But on the on the landscaping design piece, I mean, we have spent, you know, what you saw was relevant, etc. But a decent amount of conversation around how to ensure this basis, obviously, we want to create zones that people can gather. We want to create zones that are accessible and approachable. And so I think, you know, families are part of it. So if you think, you know, the presence of families legitimize and integrate projects. And so we want to make sure that it's not all, you know, uh, focused in a certain area. But that some of those gathering spaces do, that central plaza has really been designed to like ensure that, you know, it can be activated uh, or be used by the programming, but there aren't specific like family zones per se at this point.
Yes, thank you for that explanation. Um, because when you were explaining about people coming into the community marketplace and stopping by before they go on to the cinema, uh, there will be either either non-residents coming to that area. And sometimes you just want to have that extra space to be able to uh, have family connections taking place and not just uh, for the residents, right? So it's like how do you incorporate the community and also the residents?
And I think that's that's a great point. And I think that's in some of the market halls that I've been to, I mean, you don't have to necessarily buy anything to be there, right? Like, there are zones created for people to gather uh, that are at grade that, um, you know, again, are we're not, I don't know. We're, this is definitely not meant to be a biotech cafeteria. I mean, the idea is to have great retail. And my sense is that's the next global, that's a natural retail that has a spectrum of different types of offerings and ideal outcome. Uh, so then, you know, whether, I mean, you know, in more excitement, someone wants to say, I mean, like, it's it's going to take some work. Obviously, the the connection comes down, we have to re-visit what that looks like. That's an important uh, retail offering. And I think supporting the retail is complimentary. We'll help provide better options for families.
Correct. And then taking a look at birth rates, right? I mean, they do project those for many years um, along the way to look at. All right, this looks like there's a birth rate. I think the pandemic showed that. And so for the next ten, fifteen years, we're going to have a larger number of children growing up and why it could be part of that. Thank you for that explanation.
Questions too. Um, since last time, I'm still really pleased with the quality of the architecture and how it reflects the natural and historical aspects of the site. Uh, I think they're really thoughtful and I think they're really attractive. Um, and I'm excited to see how that marries together with the landscape. Um, I'm pleased to hear that you guys have um, become familiar with the uh, the wind and the weather that we get here is really significant. So I'm glad that there's going to be um, some sort of shielded um, in, I'm hoping it'll be indoor outdoor because we actually do get really good weather sometimes.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, so like wool doors. Salsa accent.
Yeah, exactly.
Great. And I'm happy to hear that. Um, the other thing I was thinking about as far as windbreak, um, is potentially using preferably native, but trees that will hopefully become inherited trees. Um, they are kind of our natural wind, but windbreaks that we get if we don't have the technology for it. Um, so I think that would be really nice. It also creates um, just just a nice volume of space and what often feels like out there in that parking lot right now, it just feels like a desert. So it would be really nice to have something above. Um, what's that going to say next? Oh, Target remaining. I think that's really interesting. I'm sure there are a lot of different facets to why that's there are positives and negatives. Um, I'm really pleased that we're not going to have to use up as much energy as it would take to tear down, especially that parking garage, tremendous amount of concrete. Um, but I do also know right now it's a really unsafe area. People are having things stored in their cars, smashing scraps. There's, I think there are assaults going, like, it is a creepy, not good place. So I'm just curious what kind of thought is given to making that place more visible, making it um, cleaner. And I know that you guys can't keep people clean, but how we can approach that as we are. Uh, it just, the idea of keeping what is existing there while building this beautiful, amazing thing around, it just kind of makes me go.
Yeah, so maybe just two common, one on landscaping. I mean, I think one of the things we've talked about and it's it's really conceptual, but important role that more more robust landscaping plays in there, physical mitigation as well. So I mean, I think part of it's that that will be a strategy. You didn't see it in time breaks, but the idea is to have to have, you know, more substantial plantings and potentially more weather protection throughout the site. I mean, we've got some different concepts that have, it's not um, you know, total shielded. I can I can envision someone asking you to have some additional protection outside of just the market hall. Um, you know, you're right on the, on, you know, target staying creates different dynamics, uh, right for the for the site. Uh, we, it's really important for their identity. The the southern structure will come down, for sure. There's the one right in front of them. So there's two garages, right? That one will come down. We're working on the one directly next to it because of the connection points. Uh, and I think you bring up a good point. There's a, there's a sustainable story there as well. I mean, it's very expensive to build structure marketing, uh, and it's unsustainable to turn all that concrete.
Yeah.
It is going to be some work. Uh, and so we're talking about what that looks like in terms of screening and lighting and things like that and and how that garage is accessed. Because the whole, once the target staying, the garage staying, everything behind it in product changes too, right? The access, you know, we've heard from the police car as well, some of the challenges. And so I think as the site itself changes, that will help mitigate um, some of the current condition if you basically have a an appropriate mall and a bunch of zones that aren't safe. So safety and security is a priority for us and will be a part of how we think about, but that looks like uh, going forward.
Great, thank you. And I do that brought up one more question, uh, which is, um, how are, um, how are, and actually some of my fellow commissioners mentioned this also, but just the circulation plan. Um, because Target for communities is obviously a really big draw and it'd be great if our neighborhoods and um, walkers, bikers in the in the neighboring area could easily access Target um, from their neighborhoods and um, getting also just through through the site.
So maybe, well, okay, so, but yeah, there's a, there's a lot of, it's on, obviously, the site, it's going to get re-rained. So wall comes down, park stays, everything, sort of the current park system changes. And part of it is bringing people through the cycle, pedestrians, bicycles and drivers. And so, you know, there will be a clearer connection target, right? Um, especially with retail village around it. They have also, I mean, it's, having multiple entries is also not positive for them just because of of sort of crime and things like that. And so I think they're going to focus primary entrance on their existing ones today, which sells the site. And then we'll build around it to make sure that it's clear to people who get there from Tan Fran, like, for example.
And just some clear, it's this southern garage that's going to disappear and it is east, shouldn't grow, so it will remain.
Yeah, the one next to work.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, I want to do it all, shoot. Um, uh, what Commissioner Kim was saying about the wind, um, I am certainly will have a solar component because the California requirements are basically like halfway down. Um, I I've been doing some research recently on on wind for other reasons, but some of the um, critical wind turbines now are like, like small local co-gen. Um, A, some of them are really cool. They're like, almost like artistic sculpture all around, but quite pretty. Um, and they got really cheap for the amount of power generation. I mean, they're they're competitive with solar. Um, so you might, you might want to take a look at that. And certainly, they're they're great for, given how much wind we have here. Throw them on the corners of buildings and up top. They they both look cool and it's a very valuable asset. So something to investigate as you're doing your science.
Well, dude, thank you.
Thank you very much, Planning Commission, and we're very grateful.
Thank you, Vice President, uh, meeting, uh, Vice Mayor, Mr. Yeah. Um, thank you for the uh, presentation. I think um, the architectural design um, has evolved uh, uh, very uh, more attractive. And thank you for considering uh, the two hundred units to be um, the uh, hundred percent uh, affordable housing, um, and which is very essential to the city. Um, as I recall uh, from our last meeting in November, there was a conversation about how can um, the, how can the teachers or the um, the employees, school district employees uh, can benefit to um, the affordable housing? And is there any, um, because it's it's two hundred and it's, you know, we appreciate that. Um, I was just wondering, is there any um, ratio? That's why we um, designated the two hundred, only two hundred units for the hundred percent affordable housing. Or or um, is there any way that we can switch from the one of the um, next, like the two or the one was the standalone, two was the one in the middle and the the three was the six hundred plus?
No, one, one is, residential one is six hundred units, residential two is the standalone, about two hundred unit affordable building, and residential three is also a market rate.
Thank you for part of that. Um, so was there any consideration um, or a conversation that was made with the staff? If uh, if we are destining some of the uh, the uh, units or housing for the employees, school district employees or teachers?
Yeah, that's part of the conversations that we'll have when we do bring on the affordable housing partner and and really uh, build out the affordable housing plan. We um, we haven't had those conversations yet on the specific population that we'll be targeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a timeline when we, the staff needs to negotiate that?
Yeah, we're bringing on the partner within the next probably two to three months and then we'll work with staff from there to build out the affordable housing. Yeah.
Right, the process already started. You're going to be in a fight to do all of those.
That's all that I said. Didn't have any questions, but wait a second. And we want to go ahead and to pass the panel. Thank you. Um, I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Um, so the uh, it's really great to know that we can target all of the guaranteed housing and um, all the, all the, the guarantee parts of the of the uh, the the projects in the first case. Um, that's great because I really appreciate the flex zone, which allows us to move forward now with those key um, components of the project, but then remain flexible um, for the, to be able to address all of the other needs based on what makes the most sense when we get to that point. Um, I want to, uh, would it be possible to bring up slightly, I have a question about the the uh, the numbers for the max R and D and max mixed use. And I know that we're probably, probably not going to do either of these. It's going to be somewhere in between here. So I understand that. But just in general, just looking at these numbers, it looks like there's about six hundred thousand square feet of flexible stuff happening between either R and D or or um, or or mixed use. Now, but then when I look at the, when I look at the plan and I look at, and you look at the site plan next to it, the flex zones look really large. So I'm I'm having, I'm having some trouble reconciling that it doesn't seem like we're giving as much density, for lack of a better word, uh, in those flex zones um, based on, based on the numbers that I've seen here. And I just wanted to just see if you can speak to any of that.
So um, you know, one of the things, I think on the past plans, you know, we we actually had some like, you know, building footprints, but this thing is so essential. To your point, there's going to be a number that's going to change over time. I mean, the reality is we have a couple of constraints, right? We've got height, which caps aside, all the, cross tardy all the way down, course eighty feet. Uh, and the reality is we have setback requirements. So buildings, you know, they have to be spaced out, they have to have access. So that breaks apart how much can actually occur on the site. Uh, and then we have to be thoughtful about how much more residential we can build. And we sort of thought about what that means in in this, under this scenario, it's like five hundred more units that are spread across both. Part of that, I think that the big challenge is great. If we had more height, we would have more density. Uh, and you'd probably have more, more, more units housing. Um, but the way the sites laid out and and how we space the lab buildings, for example, you just, you know, you don't have as much as you did you have in terms of fullness.
I think it's it's a little bit misleading too because the uh, the max mixed use scenario also includes additional lab buildings. It's not all, it's not all, uh, you know, residential and and hotel is also additional. the max mixed use scenario also includes additional lab buildings. It's not all, it's not all, uh, you know, residential and and hotel is also additional lab in that scenario. So I think it actually ends up being more than than six hundred. I think it's about nine square feet that you're still about.
My question, did I reach the point? Well, the architecture reminds me, we did max outside. There's nothing left, right? No, it's not, it's still at that side.
Yeah, yeah.
In fact, it might have along those lines, uh, the max R and D and and uh uh, yeah, we'll be able to confirm this, would have the numbers from max R and D would be the way the labs look in that one corner replicated in flex zone one and two. Missing. That's the, that's the square footage that ends up there. So um
Yeah.
Max lab is building the rest of the site out, the way that one corner looks. And then the max um mixed use, if you will, is is again, a mix of multiple uses that generally add up to roughly the same square footage.
Got it.
Just, yeah, one thing I want to clarify here, if you look at just the the lab buildings that are programmed down there and it's not broken out on the table, which is why it's confusing. That's about just shy of eight hundred square feet. And so in the max uh lab scenario where you've got one point eight million, the remaining million.
That's true. And the other thing too is with with target staying, basically, where with target off the big box we told the quarter before. Um, sorry. I understand what you're trying to say. So with that, um under the old scenario, you had a smaller flex zone up in the north. Now you've got sort of bigger and a bit smaller one in the south. And that's that sort of has impacted the on the max lab, how many buildings can be sighted there uh with with associated parking. And so you you have one to whoever's point was, that southwest corner is replicated not exactly in the two zones of the max scenario, but you're getting at least two million square feet of of lab space, which is reasonable.
All right. I think that was a much more thorough answer to that question. So I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Um, we we talked a little bit about um about drop off zones and all that during the presentation, just a little bit. To um, to the 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 drop off areas, thinking about the, thinking about the the um, the the biotech. Does that include the ability to handle private buses if we get a tenant that uses those or would we consider, you know, having them go to the to the less public parking, the bar station and have people walk or I'm just wondering if we're if we're, that's um something to consider and it's very possible that the tenant wouldn't have them, wouldn't be a need, or maybe they would go off, you know. But um, I just wanted to just um, see if that has been thought thought of and if not, you know, a lot of safety issues out there.
Well, that's a good one.
Sure. I give you a layer. Well, I'm not a show, because yeah, the the sizing of the the drop off areas will be a score. Uh, shuttle buses and sorts of things. So there's there's a bit of this, that, or.
All right. And then um, just a a a comment regarding the the change for target, obviously a big change for the site and um not necessarily that one. My, my biggest concern about target staying where it is. Um, and we've, we had talked about this um at our last joint session where target kind of had its back to the community on the on that big corner. And that was kind of a, was kind of a concern. In this scenario, and I completely understand targets' uh desire to have single entrances because of the security issue and all that. But they're putting their back to the rest of the retail village. So I just want to, I did, I'm not asking for an answer to that. I'm not asking for a change or anything like that. I just I just want us to be mindful as we're thinking about how people move without the space, especially from a retail standpoint. If I'm, if I'm, if I'm there to do retail stuff, I'm a, you know, I'm a visitor to the site and, you know, gonna go have, go go have lunch and shop. Um, I have to walk around all the way around target building to get into it. So it's just something to 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 consider when when thinking about the flow of people as they go through the the state. And then regarding the, so last comment, just regarding the the community benefit, I want to acknowledge and appreciate all of our community members who are coming out to advocate for our schools. And I want to assure everyone that we have not yet begun those discussions. Um, and I want our, I'm hoping our city team can keep us on share. The plans need to progress further before we get into that, that into those negotiations. So speaking for myself, I take the continued advocacy from our community on this topic very seriously and I'll continue to do so. Which is that point of this project. So I just wanted to acknowledge everyone who came on this team. Thank you.
Contending. All right. So I have a couple of comments and questions. I'll just go ahead and uh piggyback right off of of the community that the for the schools at what point can we have a discussion again, like where you sat, ARI could provide some kind of comment that a lot of people came out and asked about it tonight. And so what is the timeline and and what is the um, the thoughts?
Certainly, um, I imagine we'll be deep in negotiations with A R E sometime this summer. Heading into fall for some sort of approval by the council. And so that's where the timeline for the conversation. Uh, the 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 practical reality is um, I think A R E wants to deal directly with the city itself. They're not looking for a third party to negotiate with as well. So probably we will be the key. Uh, I and the team will be the key sort of focus on that negotiation. And I will take my my lead with through coordination with the council. So it's one of those things where the council ultimately does direct this and approves, approves whatever it's gonna be in the DA, but it clearly has to be something which the developer is gonna be willing to approve as well. I think one of the things I shared with some of the um, the folks of the the school foundation was it's going to end up being sort of one, oct of whatever. I will say money, but probably the better term is resources. And uh, these resources I might otherwise have gone to the city, but then have to be carved out to go to the school district. And that may be of interest to the council to do. Uh, but the council just went through our preliminary budget conversation two weeks or no, last week, I guess it was. And, you know, our picture is not getting painted very well right now. So we need to we just need to think this through and figure out, you know, where is the bank of about gonna be the best for the city? Um, that what is this project? And and one thing this, the council's unaware of yet, and the public's unaware of yet. There's an economic impact analysis being finalized as we speak. And one thing I think is is will be helpful for the school district to see is really the impacts to the school, the financial link to the school districts because of this project when it's fully built out. There's a lot of money that will be going in that direction because of the increased property values. That's a big, big piece for revenue for the school district. We'll share all this once it's public. So that's, that's kind of where we are now.
Thank you very much for that. Um, I know just want a little more clarity because um one thing that I hear from the community is so literally knocks you down the wall. And what's gonna stay open? I heard this is staying open and it's nice that we have some clarity now that target is gonna stay. But um, I was wondering if you could shed some light on construction or demolition schedule and what could stay or what, how how is that all?
So um, that's a great question. You know, we're working through that right now. Um, you know, we've got, obviously, to get through the environment process this fall. Um, and then, you know, right now, we're working through like the design of what the make ready part would be, right? And that's basically, what does the site look like when target, you know, with that, with our comments, if target uh with the in the mall. Yeah. So we're working through the design and permitting of that. That'll take most of this year. You know, the mall is at, is sort of at that point, right? Uh, and we're, you know, constantly thinking about how to work with the tenants that are there as we think about the long-term strategy. My sense is, you know, we 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 still have to have conversations with all of our tenants. Uh, but I think there's a scenario where the whole, uh, you know, potential close by the end of this year. Uh, and then we're working with tenants to figure out whether it remains open. And that's still to be determined um as we work with that. So probably I'm more information, you know, over the coming months uh to to share with council and with city staff. Uh, we're not, we're not finalized yet. The long-term strategy, it is a very big project. Um, the work to take the mall down, you know, get the site ready, to do all the utilities and think about basically building out forty four acres, that's probably eighteen months worth of work, um, once we're actually to that point. And that's the beauty of having, you know, a long-term development agreement with these flex zones that allows the project to be built out over time. It's gonna take for a project of this size in the current environment, for in terms of the market, they'll take a long time to get done. I think we're smart and prioritizing the housing and the retail and the retail village and creating that density. You know, as a part of phase one, including the affordable, that's I think a really good outfit for that part of the site. Um, but we, you know, it's it's gonna take some time.
Great. Um, I wanted to hear a little bit more about parking. Um, the number of parking spaces that are gonna be provided for each of the residential units. And then uh the parking number for the various bio science buildings. What you do about it?
See, I would, so I think there's sort of an interim and then sort of permanent condition, right? And then interim condition, I think there will be some, you know, uh, some potentially surface parking to support some of those uses. Obviously, there's parking in the cinema, seven hundred and fifty stalls that stays for the cinema for the retail. The residential is also a park. Each project has its own parking. And then the lab buildings will have their own, you know, alternative structure parking as well to to maintain uh to service those projects. So everything will be essentially self park. There's a limited amount of on-street parking, but the intent is to ensure that each of the uses um have sufficient parking to um to service those users. And, you know, in flex, you know, flex zone one, you know, one of the ideas is we may have a negotiator, which would be great. Um, if we did that, we may need additional parking. So then we would think, consider, you know, additional parking in that zone. Um, but it's really meant to be self park each each phase.
Yeah. Yeah, for the for the residential building, are you looking for like parking ratios? Is that?
That would be great.
Okay. Uh, for the residential buildings, we're parking at a one to one ratio. So one parking stall per each residential unit self park and then
The the commercial is at two per thousand. Uh, and then the retail, you know, the retail is a little bit more unique. That's targeted similar out of existing leases with specific rights to how much parking. But the current retail, for successful retail um offerings, you're, I mean, three and four stalls per thousand. Uh, we know, I've done a bunch of demographics study that actually, a lot of people drive to Tan Cran to go to Target. They don't take part, unfortunately. And so I think the reality is we're gonna solve we're gonna create a great site that has great connection to transit and there's gonna need to be enough um vehicular parking for those who choose to drive, park and shop.
Great. Um, I wanted to try to hear an answer. Um, Chair Harmon asked about these ratios and job ratios. Do you have any, any answers to these questions? So I've heard it a couple of times. And it's like, I hope we haven't got an answer yet.
If I could chime in on that, on that first answer, interestingly enough, there's gonna be something in, that's gonna be covered in the environmental impact order. Uh, and so the data shows is as a community, we have a job, we have a deficit in jobs. So we have more people who live here than we have jobs. So on one hand, having a project that provides jobs would help outside that. A good point was made, there are some opposite pipeline. And so how how does that relate? Uh, so if if council wants to make a policy at some point that that there is some goal, right now we don't have one. Right now, kind of the close up is one, I tried to have one, one region. Um, uh, we're not, we're, we don't as far as our city goes. We're on, we're on the, we don't have enough jobs, so. So that's, that's coming up uh in the um working draft of the environmental impact order will be uh being available. That's gonna begin the track here, we're counting it.
I mean, the only other comment I made is that there's, there's a difference in terms of density of jobs. I mean, technology and life science are totally different densities, right? You know, if you, if you go to an Amazon building, it's an employee at every eight hundred and twenty five square feet. In life science buildings, one per four hundred. Right? So you can back in the map on the ratio of the actual number of building occupants, you know, maybe not jobs created. And so it's different. I think you know, right now, our vision is this life science building, which has a different makeup and life science helping function in spaces function differently than tech. I mean, science happens throughout it, right? It's not just nine five. You can't do science at home, which is good. It's not safe typically. So um, you know, it is, it it does provide a bunch of 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 jobs, maybe not at the same level of density you get with a traditional pet user.
Yeah, I should really, really quickly for the chair. I understand like it's gonna be a range, right? You know, potentially a range of like a two X or three X or four X. They might say that's fine, but I really would like to see us talk about it. As that range of numbers rather than just square feet. Um, and to address the point about the ratio, like there are cities on the peninsula that are, think of themselves as veteran communities. You have your your Appleton or or whatever, right? Like that, they don't have a lot of offices. We know that the peninsula as a whole is massively a disaster. There is an enormous housing shortage. That is why rundown houses sell for a billion dollars. You know, like it's this is not even a question. And I do really want to say like I think it's awesome that we are bringing, you know, high-tech tops to the community, like that's, you know, you, the growth of YouTube and so on, like, I'm all for it. But people gotta live somewhere. And if you don't build enough new housing units to match that somewhere, people will be displaced. And I would like to not see our lower income neighbors, our laborers, our, you know, artists, teachers, whatever, driven to community and from Stockholm. So, thank you.
Okay, um. Question about how flex, what will the flex zone look like? Is it gonna be like now, it's pretty much just a parking lot? The flex zone on the south, that's with where the target, our southern parking garage is. So just curious, kind of, it's pretty barren and it's just kind of look a little, little odd, but I'm just wondering like, so is there, maybe it's too early to talk about what you plan on to make it look nicer, but what is it gonna, what's it gonna look like, like after first phase?
So that's a great question. Um, we're just starting the process of thinking about what those interviews will look like and we'll make sure that there's a a more robust plan in advance of November. You know, some ideas right now, I mean, obviously, we need to think about safety and security. I don't expect this to be a wasteland like enclosed, you know, fenced off. I mean, one of the things we've talked about is, you know, is there a zone for food trucks? You know, there's gonna end up probably being some amount of surface parking to support some of the other uses as interim use. Um, but there could be, I mean, there's a wide variety of activated uses that we've expected in those zones. I think the challenge is, what's the timing of what occurs first, right? And and when does it occur? I mean, there's, there's a scenario within those zones, pieces of them are cut out. So you could have a residential building. I mean, think of this as a uh, you know, you're basically subdividing a large space and creating, you know, roads and streets and sidewalks and then beginning to build it out of existence. So you know, we're gonna spend the summer and thinking through what are some of those different opportunities that provide a better experience for the community? Um. But, you know, I don't expect a prescriptive plan, you know, exactly what it's gonna be because they'll change, right? We need to be flexible. Um, but we've, in other, in other campuses, we've um, we've come up with pretty creative ideas how to make the spaces that end up getting built out over time, usable weathered.
Great. We can apply to some of these. So as the project goes forward and something must be activated in the flex zone, so it's gonna be provide some, we're on, how that would happen. It would, the application would come in, it would get, it would get modified and then would go the council approval of it. How how would that work?
For, for the, for the actual flex zones in terms of what gets built. So we're gonna be crafting the design guidelines. We were building right now really robust design guidelines that will then govern under the development agreement exactly what gets built, what it looks like, uh, and create some framework for that, allows for the approval process. For those projects that aren't going through design review, be promised as a part of this happening.
So for traditional housing or grocer, hotel, it's gonna be kind of put in this package now, like in this, for the guidelines.
Yeah, the framework is for the considerations. I don't want to, we're talking about some of the key concepts right here.
Yeah, we're beginning, we're beginning to draft the design guidelines. So essentially, it will be a framework for understanding the development standards for the entire site, including the flex zone. So maximum building height, setbacks, character, architectural character, street character, replating, all of those details. So that when you come back to the site, there is a baseline expectations for how development can occur in the space, as well as the uses that can happen in sites. As well as allowing some products along the interfaces, well, the sites as well. So we'll, we'll be submitting that to the city staff, going through that process to include that as part of the what it says, yeah, it's still burning. I still remember that I'm fifty. So it's, I don't know if it is, it is, I recall it's for a reason, but I just was curious of like how, how this is gonna go forward with it being like um, I wanted to comment on just how loud it gets and with the location for children to be in a, a a building and normally in the building, there's a little A building and normally in the building, there's a little park that you would want to take your kids to play outside. And and it's like. I've been down in that area quite a bit. And when the planes are taking off, and they take off pretty frequently, it's like, it's not really a place you really want to be outside of. So will these residential areas take that into account? And it'd be something that would provide some protection and just wanted to.
Yeah.
Question about it, and it's kind of like, well, what are we going to do? That's going to be covered in the E I R, I guess, right?
Yeah, the noise, it will be, yeah, the noise evaluation is part of the E I R. And then we are considering both in our outdoor spaces and our indoor, you know, the residential units will have to meet a certain decibel threshold. Um I think it's forty-five. Here, um yeah, uh yeah. It's, yeah, it's a good place, but um. But and then the outdoor spaces are also, you know, we we know the location, we know planes are going over this location. And uh and we are considering that in all of our designs.
Okay, uh just just a couple more. I'm wondering if Mary could comment on the relationship with labor and 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 just. I'll leave it at that, like. How would, how was your relationship with you seeing uh union labor on your projects? Just wanted to hear from.
Sure, between, yeah, no, I mean, typically, and I I can speak for this multiple markets. You know, most of the projects that, actually, I think every major market we're in, you know, type one construction, you know, lab buildings. Uh in Seattle, San Francisco, they're they're union markets, and it's all union work. So I think our expectations for the lab for the lab buildings. Um that's the the, you know, general contractors we engage that have the skilled workforces that do life science projects. Uh you know, I typically say, and I can't speak to all of the trade unions, but uh you know, we have, we have, you know, my experience has been a good work relationship with more contractors that. That work well as well as well. So, you know, it's 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 an important part of of um, you know, the project that we do. Um yeah, I'm not aware of any other major issues in labor today, so.
Thank you. Um just a couple more, I just wanted to 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 uh somebody that mentioned the town and memorial. And so the town and memorial will be staying in its entirety. Um and then. Question parking line. Then it is.
Quarter parking one. This is parking um going to be designated as a private parking or can just be utilized after business hours for the residential. I mean, for.
For, yeah, for which parking, but.
The parking one on the corner.
Oh, for the.
So the parking that's for the life size projects will be will be private most likely for those. I mean, we typically don't, um it's also at the opposite end of the site from, you know, the retail uh and the residential. So I, as we think about that parking strategy, it's really around the more publicly facing accessible parking being under the cinema. You know, portion under the residential retail portion, under the big residential project. Um and then as we think about flex zone one, you know, there might be parking there to support. Um the resident, the retail, as well as the garage next to Target, those are all public. For, and they're all centered in the site. Uh I I think the challenge, you know, we have is that um. You're really careful security uh when the life size projects, because we tend to have all of our parking really just for tenants. Yeah.
So I have just two more, sorry. So. Thinking about Target, you know, and thinking about our, how we start community, which previously was. And we're going to get into Target in this and say, first, first question is, the next phase in community engagement and letting it all change. How how will that be occurring? And then I guess the potential goodness of Target staying where it is besides the demolition of it. And and it being out of service and having it rebuilt. But the potential for that additional airspace. Because Target didn't want to go any higher than what they could. There's the limit at that location was higher than interested than looking at three stories. So um a benefit could be that additional density could be placed on that floor.
Well, I mean, it's like zone one.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think with Target not being there, there's a height on this entire site. So, you know, like an existing target, we're not going to put essential on top.
Right.
Um it's not the function and so on that north. On the southwest corner, one outcome is that you could have a similar scale project as the big residential block on that corner with more housing. That's one option. Uh but it's still being the same height.
Yeah, but I I think to your point, like the, what we're studying now in the E I R includes slightly more square footage than what we studied before. Under this scenario where Target was relocating.
Right, because we're the new location of Target.
You can go up to, you're going to the.
Right, and they weren't interested in going.
Right.
This is. Okay, those are all the questions I had. I'd like to thank you for your presentation.
Through the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. We have, we have two more questions from the commission.
Okay.
Oh wow.
Um. During the uh town farm remodel, I can't exactly remember which year it was, but I was on the commission and I had the opportunity to walk through the development of that. And it was an incredible, amazing project to do that. And helping out as commissioners, we have some opportunity for tour uh touring that process. Um but I recall uh walking through that construction zone and through that experience. Now, we learned a lot, but we had questions along the way that was valuable and to bring back to the commission. Uh additionally, the general manager of Campground, he gave private tours. And uh to different various community members groups, rather. Uh again, it was a really amazing experience to do that. But my question is uh regarding reusing a recycling uh process. I'm not familiar so much with the construction business, but there are some things probably within that setting that. Uh people with construction companies uh like, you know, have the humanity programs. Is there a process in place that someone comes in and strips it first? And and then it goes to another other phases for that. And if there are, can you speak to that? Would be new for us to to learn that.
Yes, I think. Two components, uh there's a salvage component, right?
Savage, yes.
There is a, having gone this before, that is one immediate. I mean, we're going to have to do quite a bit of remediation of the one, I mean, like, I don't know what the current opportunities are for reuse of the materials that are in the mall. That will be part of the evaluation. And then as it relates to sort of the sustainable sort of waste diversion piece, I mean, we target the goal of that all projects. There is a construction waste management component of that certification that requires diversion. And we we target certain rates of diversion, so that will be part of that, not just as a way to the constructed process with new construction. Also, as we think about the the site itself and where we're structured at scale. We're we're not even near solving it, right? You just, but that would, those would be considerations to think about what happens to that mall. Uh ideally, you end up reusing a lot of those materials. Uh it isn't always that easy.
Right.
You know, I think it's a lot easier when you have this, you have a more structure that has, you know, timber, for example, and you can rebuild this all. This is a, you know, it's a mall that um has seen better days and, you know. Doesn't have the same attributes as 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 others, but we'll see.
That's great. In reality, it really isn't that old because of remodeling. It's very much from the ground up in in many of the areas. So, you know, twenty years or it's not quite that old yet, but it, but it is updated, I understand. Thank you for answering that.
The chair.
Thank you. Um the last question that I had was, I'm just thinking about as as you were discussing parking and bus turnarounds and different modes of transportation. I did, I did wonder, I don't know if you have a relationship with um maybe a car share that can be used for the residents that will be there. Uh if they don't have enough parking available to them, um whether or not um maybe a car share company carved out space with or a relationship with.
Yeah, there's actually requirements um that uh for car share spaces in the residential. So all of the residential buildings will include a car share.
Okay, great, thank you. Um and then also, I know that we can't see the future. Um but I'm wondering if there will also be ample areas for like um Uber, Lyft, autonomous vehicle pickup and drop off. And whether that would be accessible for the life sciences, the residential and the car sharing.
Yeah, yeah, that would be programmed in. I mean, that's typically something that have carried back. You know, with that ship, a lot of lots of projects miss that, right? And you get conflicts because it's part of the zone. So I think we're thinking really great about how to program those zones, you know, create conflicts with pedestrians, conflicts with access to the backs of buildings, for example. Um we're also, I mean, we're going to chat about, they have a huge parking structure, right? And back to the question, it's not fully utilized. So I think there's potential opportunity there as well. Um we obviously don't control that, that's something we've on the ledger to tackle.
Thank you.
Last call. All right, just uh wanted to thank everyone for their participation. Uh this concludes the study session and we're going to take a five-minute uh recess to let everybody clear out and uh get the mayor down. Very, very good. Five-minute recess, please. Uh.
Council is back from recess and we will move on to item four, conduct a visit.
I have received the twenty twenty-four Housing Element Annual Update and authorized transmission of the twenty twenty-four Housing Element Annual Progress Report to the State of California.
Director.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I agree with the council and the membership. Uh just high level. This agenda item is two different things. Uh one is an annual update to you about progress on the housing element. Uh and then there is a part that is a state mandated uh authorization of a report that we send them that is an attachment to do the staff report. The majority of what's uh presentation will be about is is it's about the annual update to you. Uh we will then ask for uh an actual formal report itself. So in this presentation, we'll go over the highlights of uh twenty twenty-four, annual progress report or APR itself. And then uh a summary of 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 what happened in that in that year. We'll also go over priorities for twenty twenty-five, uh so that you have a preview of what's what's on on that. So there's lots of highlights. Um we accomplished a lot, so many key highlights involved council and the planning commission. Starting at the top, uh streamlining efforts, uh the major. Responsibility the state assigns to us is uh to remove governmental constraints to housing. Uh processes that are not as efficient or uh more time consuming than maybe it needs to be, uh is 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 high on the state's list. As a city, we streamlined our municipal code, make the planning process not take as long as in the past. Also internally, we streamlined our turnaround times on building permits using a consolidated plan review process. So those were success stories. We also updated the master key schedule. There were a few programs in the housing elements that called for us to take some adjustments to the piece plan, primarily in the realm of improvising the semblance of small parcels. So fees for lot line adjustments and lot holders were reduced. The rezoning of arena sites, this was a major issue for the state. For us to meet our regional housing needs allocation, we needed to reset sites for 1,099 units. Our overall arena was 3,165, so 1,099 is a big part of 3,165. In conjunction with the readoption of the housing element in late 24, the planning commission council unanimously recommended and then approved the rezoning of the arena sites. Also, there was a CIP scoring program for low resource areas that Public Works put together and was first launched in last year's CIP. And will also be part of this year's ongoing. Then in the world of projects and reviewing and approving units. We processed the planning, we processed planning applications for 714 units. We approved, we being either at the planning commission level or at the council level, 262 units. There was the processing of construction permit applications for 442 units. The issuance of construction permits for 28. Those happened to all be ADUs. Inspections of 134 units, that's the affordable project on the arena, and then final occupancy of then occupancy of 14 units, all ADUs as well. No unit is double counted, so the final occupancy, clearly they had inspections as well. But they are counted there, so the numbers have been moved to the further stage in the process as possible. This is a map showing the spread throughout the community and where in the process the larger projects are. For Tanfran, you'll note that only 600 units are being mentioned, while the zoning is going to be for up to 1,500. The applicants only at the point where they have the full designs of the large 600-unit building. So we're only taking credit that those are under at this point. The other projects are up here as well. The Tresfor project is in Site Corporation. That's in the Peach Color. 732 Old Camino is under construction as well, also in the Peach Color. So this has all the major projects that are going on either in the planning, building permit or construction. So probably the annual progress support, I'm going to introduce it a little more here. It is state mandated that we submit this to HCD every year. The fields and layout of the report itself are defined by the state. And the city council authorization is required in order to submit the report to the state. Some of the information in the APR is more understandable if we give some background, the overall arena strategy. This table comes from the housing element itself. There's only a couple of fields that I'm going to highlight. One is the actual arena allocation, split by income categories, and the total is 3,165. The other important number from staff's perspective is the remaining arena. That means after all the credits, and HCD uses the term credits, so entitled projects, approved projects, projects under construction. As of February of 24, when this table was was created for the housing element, the remaining arena was 2,158. So the total arena was a thousand more. But there were credits for about 1,000 units because they were in the process. So we had to, we as a city had to find housing sites and zone them for the 2,148 units. Because there was planning commission and council interested in having more than enough sites, adding a buffer, the actual number of sites we have identified is 2,552. So more sites were identified than we needed to, which was encouraged by the state. For the more bigger than the annual reporting, again, the arena number here is the same numbers as in the prior table. The remaining arena, if you look solely at building permits issued, the remaining arena looks very close to the overall, 2,952 compared to 3,165. If you're viewing it through that lens, not a lot of units have gotten built so far. But it's important to note that for the city's perspective, we are not responsible for building units because we can't. We don't build units. We can make sure there's enough land available so that property owners can choose to build. We can make sure our processes are such that the process doesn't preclude or delay the projects from being built, but in the end, it's market forces that determine if something's built. The part that is under our responsibility, are we reviewing projects fast enough? Are we moving them through the process? Are we getting them to the point that they can be issued? When you account for all those units, as of the end of December of last year, the projected remaining arena is down to 1,688. So in February of last year, there was 2,100. Now we're down to under 1,700. So with the predicted arena, two years into our eight-year cycle, about half the units had at least had a planning application made. I think that is very good progress, and we want to get those units actually built. But again, we can only review the projects that come forward and try to entice people and encourage people to apply. So I think we're in good shape with the projected arena numbers, and so we covered the part that we cannot cause it to be built. We can zone the land out, and we have done that with the buffer. Now, we will have to review and monitor on an ongoing basis whether any sites that we identified are not going to be able to provide the units that we thought. That goes to the no net loss, where the state wants us to regularly monitor that. So if we identify the site to have 100 units and the property owner chooses to build a commercial building on it, well, we, there's a net loss of 100 units because we know those units are going to happen. We would need to find if our arena, if our six inventory goes below our remaining arena, we have to find more sites. So that's what the no net loss is about. There will be situations over the eight-year cycle where we probably are going to have to find more sites. So again, it's an ongoing effort. Streamlining processes, again, as I noted, the major achievements have been made. I think there's still more administrative improvements, interdepartmental improvements that can be made to make the place more efficient. I think from the perspective of the planning commission and council, both bodies have been very open to and approved changes to the process. So that is very strong statement that you can make to HCD. Then there's the reviewing the applications in a timely manner. Well, planning commission and council play a role in this as well. In my time here, neither body has ever asked for a housing project to come back to another hearing. You've acted on it or made a recommendation at the hearing that you received it. That's the most you can do as a planning commissioner or council to review the applications in a timely manner. All of the rest of that falls on staff. Are we reviewing the application in a timely manner to get it to the hearing, get it to the point it can be issued? Again, I think improvements have been made, and we want to, we want to, you know, continue to make those improvements. Then the other responsibility of the city is we need to implement all the other housing element programs because the production of housing is just one of the goals of the housing element and one of the responsibilities the city. There are, I believe, 19 programs and 69 actions. Those are scheduled over the eight-year cycle, so they are underway. We've made great progress. We have been behind schedule on some of them, primarily that is due to vacancies or other other competing priorities, but for the most part, we are in a good spot and ready to move forward. So that brings us to 2025. Now, because we're in March, some of the things on our priority list have actually already been done or had launched, so both planning commission and council acted on ordinance changes or municipal code changes, I should say, or the deferral of impact fees for housing projects. So that's actually, that's actually complete. Also, we have, staff has launched the Affordable Housing Resource Hub, and this is just a screenshot of the website. This provides access to a number of housing topics. Now, we do know that there is a housing advocacy group that does believe that our information can be approved, and as noted, we do seek to continually improve the information. But we do want to note that housing law in itself is not necessarily always the easiest to maneuver. And so we're not expecting to make everything as easy as possible to understand, but we are going to be working toward that. And we have been in communication with the Senator of the E-mail and contacted the city council. We also started the use of the ABAG MTC doorway portal, which will be what the developers who are doing affordable housing units will put their units into this system. So if you're interested in the units, those projects are going to be in here, they're not in here yet, because 732 to 740 Old Camino is the first one that is going to be here. They're just starting to point them, getting ready to lease. So this is going to be a resource that's very important for folks looking for affordable housing. I would say very much to anybody interested or watching, concerned about whatever group is looking for housing, don't wait for the Tanfran project. That's a 200-unit project, which is great. We have 137 unit project most complete and a 340-unit project that might start in the next month. So keep an eye on this portal. And it will, it will let you know what units are available. Then known at loss reporting, we are going to have to do the monitoring and reporting on a regular basis, or we've covered that. The Tanfran processing, because Tanfran is such a large percentage of our arena, the state insisted we make a special policy saying that we would expedite the processing of the project. We were already planning to do that, so it wasn't really a big deal to us to include that, but that's something we were doing. And with it, if we stay on schedule to have the zoning in place by the end of the calendar year, both staff, the planning commission and council would have played its respective roles in that program. We will continue reviewing and issuing building permits with the expedited timeline for housing projects. Number seven, 2025 is the year that we identified the major year to look at our ADU programs. Right now, we allow ADUs in the manner that state law requires, but there's a lot more you can do. And we are going to be working on those programs in this calendar year as we committed to in the housing element. Also, in the housing element, we are supposed to do annual outreach, just like there's an annual update to the planning commission and council. We're supposed to do annual outreach to the property owners who have sites in the housing element to make sure they're aware of when they're in the housing element, what their options are, what that means for them, the opportunities it provides them, and also have annual outreach to housing developers to have the line of communication, possibly, you know, connect owners, interested owners, to interested developers, hear feedback of other things we can do to change our processes to make them more streamlined and such. Then moving on, there's tenant protection and condominium conversion ordinances that we committed to do that are part housing element and actually part of the MTC TOC policy compliance. So completing those will address two issues with state and regional agencies. We will be launching, will be developing and launching the work on the environmental justice element, which is also a state requirement. We have we have done RP and Placeworks was selected as the consultant to work on the environmental justice element. Placeworks is also working with other jurisdictions in the county on an environmental justice element, so they know the issues of this region and looking forward to that work. Then number one, staff will bring something to the planning commission and the council on a policy for targeting needed arena income. And the reason we mention that is when you look at this table, our projected remaining arena for low-income housing units is at zero. Once the 840 Severnile project has building permits issued, we will have provided for all the low-income units that the state assigned to us. The state's rules are that if you provide more than your arena in that category, a surplus, as they call it, that doesn't take away your numbers in the other category. One would arguably hope if you do more low, maybe that reduces the moderate, or even the above moderate. That's not the policy. So we have existing policies and ordinances and such that outline that we can establish policies for if there are certain categories we need for urgently, we can adjust our requirements to target those categories. And so again, in 2025, we'll be bringing something to the commission. We'll make a recommendation of the city council. One other item. We're not seeing it, so. So that brings us to the conclusion. We got a conference block in 2024. The APR report does say that we issued permits for only 24 units and final only 14. But I think the other numbers show that we are on track to have a great many other units come on board and move forward. We recommend that you take public comments, then we're available for any questions and comment, questions and comments from council and planning commission. And then following that, these will be questions and comments on the overall. Following that, we are asking the planning commission to specifically deliberate and vote as just the planning commission on whether to recommend to the council to authorize the submission of the APR to the state. Once that happens, we would ask council to deliberate and vote on whether to authorize the submission of the APR to the state. With that, again, we recommend having public comment.
All right. Thank you very much for the report and the information.
I haven't.
There's no public comment. All right, so commission. May I? Did you? I did the, I'm sorry, city. There's no public comment. All right, so uh, commission, may I, did you, I'm in the, uh, I'm sorry, city clerk, is there? We will go over here. We'll find it later. Um, so I just wanted to add on this, make sure it's on those.
Yeah.
You're right. Yeah, thank you. So um, as you all probably know, um, I'm a second gen San Bruno. My mom grew up here, one and four kids, and um, only her dad worked, her mom was a stay-at-home mom, and they were able to afford to live in San Bruno at that time. Um, fast forward, my parents both working, barely were able to make it to a board by house here. They had to borrow heavily from a lot of different sources. Um, fast forward to today, you know, my generation, I feel like really got the short end of the stick on this one with cost of living in the Bay Area. You know, it seems like you basically have to have two tech incomes to be able to afford a house here. And having worked in the, the planning department for a couple of years here and then working for a consulting firm, um, I completed this report three years in a row for a city that received a pro housing de- designation from HCD. And I feel like there are some things that the city could be doing that are more proactive when it comes to facilitating affordable housing. While I do admire that we are set to meet our, our low-income uh, units, I have a little bit of um, disagreement, I think, with what uh, Peter Gillie said earlier. He said, "We don't build units, we rely on market forces." And I would like to urge, if we could possibly um, think of ourselves as uh, housing is a public good and something that government can invest in more proactively. Looking at things like social housing, looking at things like uh, all of, taking stock of all of our public land and trying to redevelop on a place like El Camino Real, where we benefit from the same exact guiding principles as a private developer would have. We could build to five stories. You could redevelop City Hall if you wanted to and put affordable housing on that site. So I would just like this to be a little more creative in the way that we're approaching housing. I think that government can and should consider themselves to, to be not developers, but facilitators of public housing and of affordable housing. So we could take, we could partner with, you know, a Mid Penn Housing or someone else to take stock of our public lands and really um, even build in wraparound services. You could rebuild the senior center and put senior housing on the same site. You know, there's a lot of things we could be doing if we thought outside the box and we didn't take the approach of, oh, the state's gonna tell us to do this, so we're gonna do it, but we actually, or, you know, we're gonna wait for the developer to build here, but we really are more proactive with how we think about our programs and how we choose to develop in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I'm gonna think it's safe that we don't have any end of public comments. Uh, to the commissioners and to the council, I'm gonna go around for once. So please take the bite out of the apple at the one time, and so we'll take uh, questions on the overall update for our director.
Uh, I get it. Uh. Thank you. Uh, questions first and some commentary on the RENA numbers? Uh, and sorry, maybe you can show it, but uh, remind me, so we have a low, very low, low, moderate and above moderate. What, how do I define moderate and above moderate? Just a reminder.
Cause off, off the top of my head, I don't remember all the percentages exactly. I think uh, moderate is eighty to a hundred twenty percent of the area of median income.
Okay, and so moderate falls into the affordable, like it's a VMR unit, and then?
Moderate is still, is, yes.
Above moderate is market rate, that's. So, so we run about half and half, half uh, of our RENA is uh, low-income, VMR, and then about half is I'm real rough, this is how I would start it. Yes. Okay. And then it's interesting that those called up, you talked about um, why that, what you're gonna do. Um. You know, when I, and when I look at this, I, I think of it like it's a KPI, everything that, right, and so it's similar to what our public comment was. It's sort of like a KPI, you know, have, have we done enough? This year, I think it's still too early because it's a brand-new housing element and we'll probably see more in the next, you know, two or three years. You know, our strengths looking good. Uh, but uh, it's ju- just an interesting start, right, that the low is all used up. And I, I personally think we just need more market rate, and, and if we can fix the problem with market rate, then we can fix the housing. That's, that's me, how I would do it. Uh, on the uh, condominium conversion ordinance, can you, can you remind me, what, what is that? Is that?
Yeah, so from the perspective of view through the perspective of an existing apartment complex uh, that may be uh, well into its, its lifespan, ha- having rental rates that are maybe more moderate, uh, maybe even, well, probably just moderate.
Yeah.
Uh, with, with the owner proposing to turn it into a condominium and, and, and sell a piece off and displace the folks that are in the modern units. Uh, that is viewed by many of the regional agencies of the state as, as uh, uh, an issue. And so there are condominium condo con- conversion uh, regulations that are out there that uh, require certain things that in those particular situations have to be done for the tenants. Uh, if someone builds a project brand-new and, and does a condo map, that's not a conversion, that's, that's, that's completely different. It's if you had existing part of the building uh, and, 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 and you're in the, and it comes after.
And the proposed ordinance is going to be more restrictive, right?
The, the proposed ordinance, uh, which really we're, we're waiting on a model ordinance from ABAG, uh, that will uh, will, will see where it lands, will, will come to the planning commission, talk about it and see, do we just go with the model ordinance, uh, is it too strict, is it uh, not strict enough? Uh, to find the right spot for, for San Bruno, but uh, it would, it would likely only apply if you, if uh, the residents being displaced are uh, in one of the uh, are, are not in the above moderate category.
I, I remember, okay, I, I'll just say now, I'm, I'm very against it. Uh, I think we need to have more condos, cause everything we're going to build is going to be a market. Uh, but I mean, so that's, that's kind of a side note, right? Cause you've asked us to approve the APR, and I think you've done a great job, and I'll leave it there.
Then uh, one of the last conversions, uh, was Shelter Creek. That was apartments, they converted it, uh, and that was, when I was writing up. I said, that's great, it was much taller. Hmm. There. Oops. Um, just to, to, on the unit matrix, and things aren't double counted, is it, is it just a coincidence that in the packet we have, it says construction permit forty-two ADUs, and then the construction permits? Or sorry, with applications issued and completed. It says forty-two applications, twenty-eight issued, fourteen completed, those add up forty-two, and I was like, but it, it is, yes, that's, that's basically coincidence, like every eight-four totally used, either, sent various agents.
Hi, Kelly Back, Planning Systems Director, many of you know me over there. Um, so the twenty-eight units is the building permits issued. What happens is the APR kind of pulls in data from previous years as well, and then it also looks at the ADU applications that are under review right now, but haven't been issued yet. So twenty-eight units is what goes into the building permits issued, but then there's also, they track it through certificate of occupancy. It doesn't contribute to the, our RENA that we produced this year, but they are tracking uh, products from the middle through OCL.
So if you, if you have the packet, I suppose with slides, uh, it's, it kind of stands pages ten to eleven.
And if the fact that, so uh, from my statement about not double counting, it's just the slide.
Okay, cause like, there's a, this one where, uh, like, cause like, yeah, it's on page ten at the bottom, it's like in number forty-two. Maybe, yeah, maybe this is, looks like a separate great title number. Um. But so like the total ADU production was like forty-ish, not eighty-ish, or what's the?
If we mean by production, building permit issuance, which is what RENA is looking at, it's twenty-eight. I think there are forty-two, it may be that there were additional uh, building permits that were submitted, but not yet issued this calendar year or the previous calendar year.
So like planning applications, but they haven't got the building permit, correct? Yeah, but the math on that was like. Um, that is a big step up on ADUs from previous years in terms of.
We're producing ADUs at about the rate that the Andrew repeated, um, in terms of building, we actually have completed exactly three, three years and a half of the ADU for the year.
But like from the, like, my, my, like, it's like, it is a step up of like a couple of years ago. It's a good thing anymore. Um. That, that, that uh, on slide forty-seven, ADU programs are, have, are, do we have like a pre-qualified building library, are we looking at? I know that's something that seems to be successful for Santa Day, which I had suggested in the past, like, we could just steal their library of designs and not have to do the work ourselves.
So there, um, we are part of the ADU Center, which is kind of a regional collaborative for San Mateo County. Uh, and they are working on an ADU design gallery, I believe that's called. Um, and then we are required by law to have a process for um, for reviewing and processing uh, pre-approved ADU designs. So we are doing that, and I believe we actually are reviewing some uh, designs from architects that aren't so predictable.
Okay, all right. Um, you know, I was gonna add something, it was the categories that um, Commissioner couldn't kind of be sure.
Do you want?
No, questions right now.
Thank you for including me. Uh, the council, we can get to the questions, and hopefully we can give them to the seat. Um, first we'll start, if that's okay, uh, council member Alvis.
Mr. Mayor, um, do, do we categorize ADU applications and uh, junior ADU applications as both separate units? So it adds up to the um, the requirement from the HCD?
Yeah, so an ADU or a junior ADU, I believe, um, to count as a new residential unit.
And, and in this report, there was no um, junior ADU applications that uh, we issued or?
They may just all be um, categorized as an ADU, but I do believe we did have some junior ADUs this year.
Can you clarify um, for, for the two-hundred seventy-seven permits that we issued, the RENA number, and it's um, categorized as low-income? And within the two-hundred seventy-seven permits that we issued, um, is, there's ADU units in there? And they are considered, all our ADUs are considered low-income?
So, so the, the two-seventy-seven on the screen is not permits issued, that is the remaining RENA after permits have been issued. So the, the big number between the RENA of four oh five in, in the yellow column, and then the two-seventy-seven in the next column, the, the big difference is the hundred and thirty-four unit project, that's a thirty-two El Camino. Uh, there might, there, there's sprinkling of other units in there. Uh, and then on the question of how ADUs are, are counted, one to.
Uh, so we use currently um, a formula that's grouped by the state, where we do thirty percent, thirty percent, thirty percent to very low, low and moderate, have ten percent for above moderate. This is actually the last calendar year that we'll be able to do that. Moving forward, um, we are currently um, have a survey that we're asking people who um, get building permits for ADUs to complete to understand more about how they're planning to rent out the units. In the future, we'll be extrapolating that data um, to assign and incorporate to our ADU permits.
I wanna circle back on um, what you mentioned about we are not obligated to build, but we are just mandated to allocate sites for um, the, the low-income or moderate. Is there um, it, so is that number from the date that we got the, we received the approval from HCD? And um, is there a deadline that we need to meet the uh, remaining, the sixteen-hundred fifty-eight, I think?
Yes, so uh,
What sixteen?
So there, the the Housing Element is in the eight-year cycle, and so uh, when we do our last uh, APR report for this cycle, in perfect world, the middle number would be at zero. That means building permits have been issued for, for everything. Uh, in, in my opinion, that uh, if you look at the RENA that is needed in this region, in the state as a whole, there's not enough materials, contractors to build all those units. So my recommendation again is to, we should do everything we can to make sure that green number at the bottom is as close to zero as possible, and then see if there are things we can do to get some of those projects o- uh, across the finish line. Uh, and I uh, the, I'm gonna side note, going to your question uh, as well as the, as the public speaker, we do have a program where, where we have committed that we will take one of our sites and uh, partner with an affordable housing builder and, and do affordable housing. So uh, the statement about it is not our responsibility to build was, that was general. In at least one case, yes, we, we are gonna take that, or we technically, we committed to. But it's just, the statement was to make the general statement that, that no one recently expects us to build three thousand one hundred and sixty-five units or directly cause it. Uh, uh, I, I agree with the speaker, we should do our part to find proper, property or properties, if, if, if it works, the poor budget, but um, you know, just wanted to allow that.
Thank you. Was my right?
For instance, that one, you know, since that was mentioned in the report, then um, getting it, initially. So when we, you know, the upshot of this report present, sent it to them is twenty-eight. The, how many was, so it's like, what are they, just historically talking with, 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 with folks at HCD? Are they gonna just focus on that, or they, they're really looking at the whole, like the whole picture and seeing, well, okay, if you just look at it from this metric, you know, two years into the eight years, Stephanie, as you said, where outdoor units are somewhere in that pipeline, which is great. Um, do they look more at that, or they, or is it? Basically, I just wanna see if we're getting anything, but. Well, we will, can get on that, this is what's the letter gonna say, yes. Uh, so this will be our first APR for the new Housing Element, even though it's our second year. We technically did an APR last year, but we didn't even have a certified Housing Element yet. Uh, we weren't really talking about the new programs. Uh, so the RENA numbers, I would not be surprised if uh, in the letter, I would not be surprised if we received a call or, 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 or press for a call from staff where we could explain to the other caller. Uh, um. Uh, then the other part, there is uh, part of the APR does have our written responses to our progress on all the programs. And I think there's a lot in there uh, that is positive. Uh, so I do think there'll be, there'll be some level of communication, uh, understanding they have to go through four hundred of these, four hundred plus of these. Uh, and uh, certain things that are going on right now could be because of market conditions that other, other communities are also facing. Uh, but I think the, I think overall, once, if they reach out to us, I think we'll be able to uh, get a, you're doing five from HD, whereas their initial will get twenty-eight. What's going on, uh, might think that we're not, not, you're doing well. Got it. Right, thank you. And then my other kind of question goes, the, we get asked a lot, you know, when we, when we're talking about the various levels of, what is the input for that? And I know we have, and I'm looking at the table we have on our, the work projects section of our website, which actually is pretty good. Uh, public comment notwithstanding, there's a lot of, but the um, the table that's here on the, it, the categories are in, in percentages, do these? The table that's here on the, it, the categories are in percentages, do these map? So, so five, so the, the, there's the same number on the slide, is that, I think I'm asking a super basic question. Um, the way that, the, the way that the income levels are, are mapped out, are my income category thirty percent A M I, fifty percent sixty, eighty, a hundred. Does that map to very little, low, moderate? In the most part, they do, and oftentimes they will have uh, a word, word next to it, uh. On our, I'm looking at the table on our side and it doesn't, so I guess that. I just wanna know if those, if that's what the mapping is, and then if, if, if it is, it might be, might be helpful to stick an extra column in there just to, just to uh. Solidify that more focused, because that's a common question to begin when we talk about, you know, hey, we're, hey, we're, look, look at this new, look at this new uh. I don't know what we're working on and, you know, fifteen percent of this affordable, lots of affordable. So, thank you. Yes, and just, just eyeballing it, it's not perfect, there are some, there, there, there are more than there. It, it's, it's not perfect, but I think we can add something in there that would show uh. Generally what they relate to, because I, you know, for example, the, our chart has eighty percent, a hundred percent. Uh, moderate is eighty to one twenty. Right, so modern, we would say moderate is the eighty percent, a hundred percent one. Uh, so it won't, perfect, but I, I think it still gives the information and, and we can, we can definitely add it in there. Great, thank you. The other thing that's a very important note is uh, the county releases the numbers on, on the A M I, that doesn't come from the city. Uh, so the percentages stay the same, but the actual number could change each year. Yeah. Great, thank you.
Yeah, you're, you're okay. I mean, you just give it to our team. Hey, I was looking at something, sorry. First, thank you, clearly this was a lot of work, yeah, we're definitely going in the right direction. Um, despite the uncertainty in the economy, we have projects that are getting close to being completed and are under construction or under planning. So those are a lot of great things. Um. Understanding that with the current vacancies and we have three vacancies out of seven, is that already?
Um, in the planning group, uh, three vacancies out of six.
Out of six, yeah, okay. Um, so. Which, if we can fill those vacancies in our staff, we'll have more of these projects, but figuring that three people are doing all this work right now.
I guess the, 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 the three staff, full-time staff that are here that are doing, are doing incredibly well. We also do have contract planning support, uh, it is not to the point where it. It, it completely fills the three vacancies, but we are still getting some uh, some support there. But yes, we are working towards the improvements, you know, to get the positions filled, so we can get more of these tasks done.
Right, I haven't had a chance yet to visit the portal, doorway portal, so I'm encouraged by that. Uh, acknowledging the public comment that was submitted, uh, that this is the first draft or first. Product and, and revising these documents are looking naturally occurring as we start getting with the feedback. So I'm, I'm encouraged by that. I wanted to address a question or a comment from Mr. Jones um, in the audience, basically of what are we doing? And the council did approve a strategic initiative to look at um. The analysis of major city-owned properties. So this is something that we're proactively doing and a credit there talks about city hall, the library, fire stations, city net headquarters. Uh, parks and quarters, uh, scout house, cantapa house, corporation yard, downtown parking lots and other potentially other, other utilized sites. So this is something that um, will continue to move forward as one of initiatives. Um, my, my question, I have two questions, one is. Proactively looking at how to add additional zone? And, and when should that per, do we need direction from, from council and, and asking for that? Cause that's additional work, right? And how much time would that take?
So that is a perfect segue to the next agenda item, okay?
All right. I didn't go as though, but you did that, so I was just agreeing, okay. And then the other portion, uh, the other question I have is. We're doing fine on the low, we're, we're, we're not reaching the numbers for very low. And we heard tonight um, that uh, Bay Area is providing twenty percent affordable housing and our developers team. So would it be an opportune time to start looking at trying to increase that fifteen percent? Because it seems like that would be one of the last things getting built, and as we're seeing, affordable housing is getting built, but it's not at the lowest level. And how long would we wait till we start looking at? Um, trying to react to that instead of proactively encouraging it more, required it?
So the increasing our minimum requirement is uh, is challenging, there's a lot of financial analysis. Uh, that you would have to show that doing so isn't going to make it harder for housing to get built. Uh, fifteen is kind of the sweet, but I'm not saying it can't be raised. Well, what, what has been done in, in the recent amendments uh, uh, is to make processes so that if you do go higher than fifteen. Uh, uh, with uh, lower, deeper levels of affordability, you can get faster process. So it's trying to. Recare it, uh, if you will, as if you go this route, you can possibly not have to go to hearings. If you go this route, you would have to go to hearings, and what, what uh, staff and the planning commission has experienced with these housing projects that are going to hearings is. Because of state law, there's not much that can be done to a housing project at the hearing. Uh, so it was the conclusion of the planning commission and staff that offering this expedited prices, the process could be a really good deal. Uh, so far it hasn't, it, it, it only went into place in, in July, it hasn't uh, uh. With the economy where it is, there's not a lot of new projects that have come in after the Tanfran project was proposed, that's faulty family housing. So it's a little too early to see if it's, if it's working, uh, but um, there's a. That's also part of the reason why we have programs where uh, we're gonna be talking to the owners of the housing home sites. Uh, to the, to the housing, housing builders, to ask them the questions, what would need to happen in order for you to make the decision to sell the property to this developer? Question this developer, what needs to happen for you to buy the property? Uh, and move forward, that also ties into something council asked uh, in last year's budget as goal, and that's the uh, fiscal assessment of the T C P. Uh, in a nutshell, does the twenty, and I'm kind of cheating, this is on, 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 on the next slide. Does the, the rules of twenty thirteen pencil in twenty twenty five? And do the rules need to change? Uh, so, so the, the, the short answer is when we get to the next item, uh, we'll be mapping out how the city can take proactive steps in these areas.
Got it. Can't wait.
Okay, um, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to the Chair of the Planning Commission, take the next steps and order their deliberation.
Do we need any further discussion or are people prepared? Uh, I'm happy to. Um, take a motion that the planning commission receive the Housing Element and Projects Report twenty twenty four. And recommend that City Council authorize transmission to the Housing and Community Development Department of the State of California. I'll second that. Uh, roll call please.
Commissioner BSI is on an excused absence, Commissioner Doroso is absent, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Levine?
Aye.
Commissioner Madden is on an excused absence, Vice Chair Kunk?
Aye.
Chair Herman?
Aye.
You. Thank you. Uh, at this time to the City Council, are there any other questions, comments, or discussions uh, on this topic? If there is not, um, I will now entertain a motion to, I will make the motion to uh, receive the housing element, the annual progress report for twenty twenty four and authorize transmission to the State of California. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Recorded as a five oh unanimous vote. That will conclude this portion of it, um, here in Wuhan, your, your third, uh, third item. So now we're gonna move on to item five, announcements and presentations.
Receive presentation on status of long-range planning initiatives.
This is no actual required, this is informational update, um, so please direct her.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Can't remember how to talk. Uh, so this is a status update on the long-range planning initiatives, uh. This is the list of them, they're the same, they, they, they're in the start of the point, they're also the same items from November. Uh, so I'm gonna jump to a different slide which shows. Uh, our, our chart of over time where these are at, and so uh. Just to be clear, these are fiscal years in, in, in the columns, uh, quarters are combined. Uh, quarter one and two is in one row, three and four, that's, there's another column, you want to make it more legible. Uh, not gonna talk much about Tanfran because we already had an item on Tanfran. Uh, but let's talk about the economic development slash land use strategy because uh. That and the housing opportunities strategy uh, go to some of what we talked about before. Uh, that is, do our, there's recognition that economic development uh. Is critical to the fiscal health of, of the city. Uh, and to be, to be very clear, there's, there's, there's no illusion that development is going to solve all, all of our future budget issues. But not getting as much opportunities uh, to actually open is uh, definitely not going to help your future budget issue. Uh, so that, it's been a priority of staffs uh, that we, we, we raise at, at past meetings. And a key milestone is gonna come up in the summer, uh, where we are gonna be asking for council direction. Uh, there, there's been the, the T C P fiscal assessment which is underway, and we will have the findings uh, in the next few months. Uh, on a side note, we're also gonna take something from the planning commission in April. Uh, to ask the planning commission to look at a version of the land use map that shows the allowed uses and the allowed heights. And with, with your experience. Are we, are there opportunities? Are there changes that should be looked at? Then when we come to the council in the summer, you will have a fiscal analysis of whether our regulations in the transit order plan. Uh. Still working twenty twenty five and beyond for someone to rebuild on their site to, to implement the vision of the plan. But you'll also have the uh, kind of. On the streets experience of the planning commission as, even regardless of the fiscal issues, these are areas where maybe it makes sense to change what we allow, uh, and what the intensity is. Uh, so in the summer of twenty twenty five, uh, in simple time terms, there'll be, there'll be three options. Uh, council could say, no, we're not gonna do anything. Uh, council could say, let's just make some minor tweaks to the T C P, nothing that causes the need for too much um, environmental analysis uh. Or a larger scope, which, which would be, let's change the input which I am predicting is going to be that there are opportunities uh, to change. And do a larger scope, look at our whole land settlement, what, what uses are allowed in what, what, what parts of the city. Immediately, we're gonna pri- primarily be talking about the corridors, uh, uh, uh. And what, what changes should happen with heights, intensities, uh, how that should translate eventually into the transit corridor specific plan? Uh, what should we do with, with the zoning of, of the town center area? Should we bring that into the transit order plan? Should that be its own plan? Uh, the Bagel's specific plan or the uh, adjustments that need to be looked at there? Uh, as we all know, anything that involves increasing heights uh, will likely require valid measures and. The, the whole. Um, decision point in, in the summer is whether council even wants to walk down that path. Uh. Based on anecdotal information, uh, the staff's recommendation is going to be to do the larger scope amendments. Uh, that's why we raised it in, in, at the November meeting uh, and such. Uh, but in the summer, you'll have actual fiscal data and you'll have input from the planning commission on, on potential changes. Uh. I know there was discussion in November of, that's a long time. Uh, if, if we do start something, why doesn't, why can't it, why can't that valid measure be sooner? Uh. The work we're talking about would be amending a great number of plans, uh, there would be E I Rs that have to be updated, uh, expanded upon. Uh, and then uh, I think it's very important that we build the uh. Build the argument, build the story for why we're doing this and not run this uh, through. So for those three reasons, we, we, we think it's not realistic to get the valid measure uh, prior to twenty twenty eight. Uh, if there's council direction to try to do it faster and not take certain steps that, that are optional. Uh, we can certainly do that and we'll be talking about that in the summer. So that is this topic, I'm gonna go through all of these, when you do have questions, I can bring the slide back up, we could talk about that particular one uh, if, if, if you are interested. Then the housing opportunities driving. Um, H C D required us to basically commit to a valid measure in twenty twenty for housing opportunities. Uh, nothing to do with the uh, economic development aspects of it. Uh. Two areas that H C D was very concerned with. The first is that our transit corner plan, when it was done, uh, its E I R only studied up to sixteen hundred units. Uh, it's very common that particularly the first time you adopt something, uh, you don't study max build out because that. Uh, is a lot of analysis. Uh, right now, with the affordable housing projects coming online, we're probably not even at the halfway point. Of, or we might be just over the halfway point, that number, but the state was very concerned that, hey, city, if you're gonna keep saying you have housing element sites. In the T C P area, but your E I R only covers X number of units, you gotta do something about that. So we, we are in some way going to have to find ways to uh, update the T C P to add more housing opportunities. Uh, again, staff's gonna recommend we allow non-housing opportunities as well, like hotels, allow hikes for hotels and such. Uh, uh, but that's one aspect, the other aspect is in our high resource areas, which are, are primarily our neighborhoods on the other side of two eighty. Uh, the state wanted more things done that would add opportunities for more units in those areas. Uh, they wanted more opportunities for lots of ones, they wanted uh, uh, we asked them the question, would. Allowing an additional A D U beyond what the state allows, would, would that be something the state would think is, 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 is big enough step? And they said, yes, yes, that could work too. There's a number of things that the state wants us to examine and look at and do in that area. Uh, not to change the single-family environment, the whole neighborhood, but to uh, try to find the mixed middle, if you will, that, that, that's commonly talked about. Where a single site might have, have two units on it, maybe three. Now, that is something that because of uh, ordinance twelve eighty four. Any increase in units or density in those areas, far as about that, even if you're allowing one extra unit on the lot. If not for state laws saying you have to do A D Us, I would argue A D Us is a violation of total and total. But state law says you have to, so we're gonna do with that. So if we're gonna allow more than state law. Uh. Twelve eighty four would require about that. And so the idea is we're gonna have this economic development work, um, intensities happening over here. We're gonna have this housing study happening over here, why not do it together? Uh, particularly both both of them are going to be talking about the TCP area and the corridors. So. That's also why these are are lined up the way they are. Uh, in addition, housing opportunities are also all the other programs that we have to do in this timeframe. It's not just the. Land use changes that will lead to the ballot measure, uh, but the. The 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 task that has the most chat, I think, is is the one that is going to uh be the additional units in the harness for service. So that's the the update on the housing item. Then we have the MTC TOC policy, which is the transit oriented communities policy. That if we want maximum access to O B A transportation funding, we need to adopt policies that comply uh with the M M M T C's rules. In a nutshell, that means for the lands within a half mile of Caltrade and the BART stations, we have to amend all the zoning, specific plans and such. To have minimum densities and intensities and and maximum parking standards as in. Uh, an owner could not do more parking than this level. Uh. As we talked about at at prior sessions, uh, the max parking uh from size perspective is most controversial, is the most. Not in alignment with our our uh our political seasons. Uh, particularly for the BART station because there's a higher bar at the BART station than the Caltrade station. Uh, so that's going to be challenging work. Uh, there's also some housing policies that we have to do, like the common conversion ordinance and tenant protection that happens to. Address what the state wants as well as what M T C wants that we'll be working on. Uh, and then something heard recently is uh M T C is going to have have to have tiers of compliance. As it's not a you comply or not, uh, so it's not a you will get funding or not. Uh, and I think this is very important, uh, because as we've learned more and M T C has not figured out what they're going to do with those tiers yet and what it means. But the staff recommendation will be, we should adopt all the TOC rules that closely aligned with what we already do. And then ask the tough questions on the ones that don't align, particularly the maximum parking. And if we will end up in a high enough tier. For uh O B A funding, we should consider maybe not doing the maximum parking. Parts around the BART station or any other thing that may come up that that uh planning commission or council is is not comfortable with. Hopefully, as we get closer to when these uh uh are upper hearing, we'll know more about the tiers, be able to tell planning mission and council. Our read is if we do these things and not this, we'll get access to seventy percent of federal funding. And maybe that's at this point, that's just a number I I made up, so not saying that that's a target. Uh, we are purposely going to be trying to have the formal hearings for these items as close to uh the end of the calendar year. Uh, because new information may come out from M T C uh that adjusts what what we may end up doing. But as I said, the the intention is. Embrace and fully adopt all the things that pretty much align with what we do or aren't far off from what we are doing. And then uh uh. Ask the tough questions about the ones that are are not as comfortable with uh and make the decision at the end of the year whether to adopt those or not. Moving the the these answers here are going to be pretty quick. Uh, climate action plan, it's a city initiated project. Uh, it's underway and background information is being is being collected and we're preparing for the community engagement. On the upcoming slide, we'll be announcing uh the first community engagement for the climate action plan. Uh, we remain on track to have it adopted uh at the same timeframe as 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 we reported at the last session. Uh, the C B T P, the Community Based Transportation Plan, this is run by C CAG. Uh, this is uh something that's looking at South City and San Bruno and identifying uh transportation projects uh. That will then get uh advantageous opportunities to get funding from C CAG. Uh, the. engagement uh is 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 soon to occur, I believe, soon, uh, at the BART station and in downtown. Uh, a draft plan is expected in late twenty twenty five for city adoption, followed by C CAG adoption. Uh, the last one is the safety element. Uh, this is a regional cooperative effort. Therefore, again, while the city will adopt. Our safety element of the general plan, uh, we are one of many at the table uh on 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 this initiative. As a result, the timeframe isn't has moved back. Uh, there is going to be. Uh, community outreach, again, we'll have announcement for that. And one. Note, uh, I I know at least council has uh received information from fire department about the fire hazard zones. Uh, arguably, that's an implementation measure of the safety elements that we're going to have to do before we even adopt the new safety elements. Sometimes they have an out order. Uh, but the fire hazards is something, the type of topic that would be in the safety element. Uh, making sure we 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 plan for evacuations, plan for the work improvements being done in fire hazard zones, meaning certain rules and such. So that is happening. In conclusion, we do have a community workshop planned for April twenty fourth. Uh, it will be here in the. Uh, six to seven thirty P M. We're still working on the. Promotion materials. Uh, it is going to be mostly open S house style. Uh, there'll be a number of boards. There will be a presentation as well. Uh, promotional or the all the ports and materials will be in English and Spanish. There will be interpreters available. Uh, the promotional promotional materials are being prepared, will be posted on social media, websites and such. Uh, we're also working with local organizations. To get word out, so uh this this engagement again is for the climate action plan and the safety. So with that, uh, recommend take public comments and then we're available for any questions, comments or feedback. And again, there's no 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 formal action in a second.
Are there any public comments? Jones, I'll be quick. I'll be quick on this one. Please provide food at the public workshop page. Excellent. Okay, we'll bring it back to the boards. Again, I'm going to ask if you can give us the same to keep your questions and our comments, but this is not an action item. It's just an update. So we'll start with the top P I. Yep. Very good. Council take notes. Um, how quickly got me back? Do we have? Questions, comments? We're doing open one time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, at some point, we have to develop the um open space on Al Camino. Uh, I think there are four. Uh, this buffet, I don't know if that's in process, um, the budget motel. Uh, and also the 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 one on the corner of Al Camino and the junction to uh one one oh one, I think, or two eighty one oh one. And um the next to the real 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 uh state office. Um, I don't know the others, get their hall on Al Camino. And if we post the uh. If we propose a higher height limit on Al Camino. And it goes to the ballot, it looks, it seemed like it will align to uh one of the uh M T C policy. Um, to provide more housing within half a mile of the transit corridor or transit. So, um, what I'm what I'm saying is instead of waiting uh. Until you fiscal year twenty twenty eight, twenty nine, and we are um. Going through the process of our updating our zoning and it aligns to the M T C policy. What's the probability of making the that? Proposal to increase the height limit on Al Camino before twenty twenty eight?
So where state state law will override uh local boundary, the the M T C policy. The M T C policy requirement is not even required. Uh, the M T C policy requirements is is a if. If we want to apply for certain types of transportation funding, this is. It uh compliance with their policies is required. So uh, you're correct that a lot of what we're talking about. Uh, uh, looking at uh increasing opportunities. For investment in properties, economic development, uh, more intensities and such, align with a lot of. Uh, recommendations of a lot of like M T C, uh, H D would support it, but we still have to do a uh ballot measure here because of. Our ordinances and that needs to have environmental review done. Uh, that needs to have us go through and study what the changes would be. And so. Again. Without a major change in focus of the entire organization onto just this issue, I don't think it's realistic. We can get a ballot measure. That has the best chance of being passed prior to this. Uh. One of the is, uh, our expectation is at a presidential election, which 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 would be in in twenty twenty, we're going to get the most turnout. Uh, uh, and. Doing this at a different election could risk. The lower turnout causing it not to pass. Now, if council in in the summer says. Walk down the path. We're not saying we're doing the ballot measure in twenty twenty eight or or anytime, but keep walking down the path. Keep keep working towards it. We will eventually start to talk to experts on this this area and. If they give us a reason why doing it in. Doing our own ballot measure or in a different circle or something is advantageous, we can we can bring that forward. But I. The expectation is I think it's going to, it's going to be. That the twenty twenty eight elections is is going to be the one that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah, right? Do I just?
The scenario that I'm thinking of is. Of all this work to get it ready to go in twenty twenty eight, if voters say no, they'll have. So we're going to spend all these resources, all this time working on it and. What's the state there? Voters say no, like. Have you, has that been discussed? Like, is it a guess? I'm like, the state is basically going to say, well, sorry. So it's kind of like, is it really, really required, you know, thing? State is doing a lot of things. We're taking the power away, councils and, I'm going to guess, home residents.
Yeah, yes. Uh, we we had that specific conversation. Uh, the state required us to put in policies that said what we would do if the ballot measures did pass. And we kind of, it's like. What can we do? And and basically it's trying to do another one in their eyes that was adequate or find other alternatives. Uh, I. I think that given the budget situation, uh, given our. Uh. Given the housing issues, I think a very good story can be can be told for why this is necessary for the betterment of the entire community. Uh, if we go down this path, it will be on all, all parties involved to to. Uh, help develop that message and get that message out.
Yeah, so uh from the previous item about the initial zoning. But wait for later. So this is something that I have tuned that you're going to be looking into. That's part of it, right?
So, yes, and uh there there's increasing heights. Or increasing densities in residential areas. Uh, uh, those have to go through a ballot measure. There are. There are certain other things that we might be able to do to some of our regulations to to make sites more attractive short term. Uh, and also there are other things that we didn't put in the housing element that could be housing sites. Uh, with their existing zoning possibly also. So, uh. We are going to see those type of efforts in the in the short term.
Right, it's briefly mentioned, that's in the slide, Bagel. Town Center, right? So that's something that God is going to be looking into. Um, and then for the. Increasing the percentage of low income housing. Went fifteen, something higher. We don't want to uh make it even hard. The the development. No, but I just wanted to hear your thoughts on that, anything.
So, uh, first, there is a housing element program that says we're going to relook at our uh our V R requirements. So it is going to happen. Um, we'll do a fiscal analysis and such. In theory, you could say what we have is too too much. Uh. I'm fairly optimistic it won't because I think what we have is pretty common. Uh. The other thing is maybe the number fifteen stays there, but because we don't need low, we need very low. Maybe what that fifteen is made of is going to change. I mean, because right now for for rental, the fifty percent is five percent moderate, five percent low, five percent very low. We don't need the low. Can we adjust things to make giving five percent modern? And ten percent very low? That that is a significant cost to a developer, even though the percentage is still fifteen. So all of that is on the table, you know, to look at. We'll have to get the analysis uh uh. And and bring that to planning commission council.
So following up on that, we meet the look. Now it's it's up to the developer to decide for the fifteen percent, that other five percent being their choice, that how it works?
Well, right now, we are uh, we are, we negotiate with 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 developers and and if we can find a way to make it cost neutral to them. Uh, they will do the per, they will offer what works for us. Like, uh, but. A very low income unit has the biggest hit on 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 the bottom line. The moderate has the least. So there are certainly arguments that if someone. Uh, wants to, instead of doing lows, wants to do some moderates, well, that's not one for one. We do more more units. Uh, we pay a little bit of uh uh contribution to our health fund for some of it. On the side, if someone for that five percent low, if we're trying to get them to move that very low. Again, the very low costable to them, they're going to want something. Uh, we we put forward the 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 the. Streamlining process where you do twenty percent lower. Uh, that means no water, that that just lower ones at twenty percent total, you get a ministerial process. Uh, there's no sequel, there's no hearings, there's some cost savings there. Uh. Is it enough for somebody to, can we get, we, uh, it's too early to tell, but we we want to talk about all of those, all those options and and strategies. And one of the things that will be. Uh, asking a consultant to help us with is what is the conversion factor? Like, how many very low, how many lows pencil out to a very low? Because if we can come up with a conversion factor that's very straightforward, then uh there's less negotiating and and kind of know what we're doing. So, yes, all of that is on track. It's not on track for twenty twenty five. It's probably a twenty, well. The looking wholesale at the B M R ordinance is not a twenty twenty five issue. Looking at the, are there ways to. Adjust whether it's low, very low or water is on our, is something we're going to be looking at. Thank you.
So, um, on the 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 comment of the the when you do the ballot measure, I would agree the odds would be much better in twenty twenty eight. Um, especially given what we saw from our measure Q and measure X in twenty twenty four. I mean, we saw we saw that happen and, you know. I I also have the same trepidation, well, what if it, what if it fails? And, yeah, I mean, what if it, I I I don't, I don't know, um. All we can do is our best and I think we'll be. Be doing our best by spending the the time to to get that message out to a bigger. Here's some compliance from the M T C. Really, that's really interesting. Here's some compliance from the M T C, really, that's really interesting development. When we heard about this last, it was their way or the highway. How did they, the, um, so what changed? Did they get a lot pushed back from cities when, when, you know, faced with the the, or you guys, those things, or do we even know? And it does, ultimately, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, it's more of the areas.
The, the, the feedback so far has been, um, we're, we're at the, uh, we're one of the organizations that is most aware, working with them and, uh, dare I say, open minded, uh, a lot of the contents that they have experienced. Uh, maybe we're the top. Thirty five percent of all the organizations that are working in the entire area. Uh, for a lot, um, a lot of planning commission and city councils have not talked about this very much yet. Uh, so we're kind of ahead of the game, uh, which means there's a lot of uh, staff members in other cities that, um, haven't had any fun time looking at the corridor, but seeing how maybe it's not too hard to beat some of them. Some certainly are, uh, that's why I think they're getting a lot of that pressure. Um, and, uh, the, the, the clock is running and, uh, um, for the, the deadline at the end of, of, we're supposed to have the rules in place back to, to January one, twenty twenty six. And we feel that this is going to be tough and we're being over ahead of it. So, uh, maybe it's, maybe the deadline gets pushed back or something. Maybe the, the, maybe the 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 cheers are touched at, and we just do certain things for at least this next round of, 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 of the funding. We're still in good shape and then we can put off the harder things until, until later. So it's, it's a, it is a moving target. Uh, a lot of folks are frustrated that M T C doesn't know exactly what everything is going to be. Uh, but I think when, uh, they initially adopted this, I don't think they intended there, there would be cheers.
I, I, I don't know, that's for sure. We, we talked about Austin, there was that concept of here. So maybe, you know, maybe they're, maybe they're looking at it and seeing the, the progress that people are making and saying, if, yeah, the entire region fails, then M T C failed.
Yeah.
So, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. With that, again, informational item only, so there is no action. I want to thank, uh, again, the commission for your time and, uh, um, being here with a joint. I just think it's more effective, efficient and a positive collaboration. So I appreciate that again. Uh, our interim employees, she just, and Brian, thank you very much. Everything went well. The community development department, uh, a lot to say, a lot to do. Thank you very much. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next regular visit to the council meeting, which will be held on March fifth, twenty five, seven P M. This meeting is adjourned.